I now call to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, October 1st, 2013 at 6:30 roll call.
Mayor Archie?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Sotter, you got the minute cue. Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Tarrpenny?
Here.
Commissioner Banzer?
Here.
Tonight's invitation will be given by Reverend Kurt Snell of St. Timothy Lutheran Church. Would everyone stand and please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance following.
Blessed Heavenly Father, gracious Redeemer, Holy Spirit of life, we give you thanks for entrusting us to this city of beauty that you have given to us. Guide us to be good stewards, give us your protection, and we pray for your wisdom among our leaders that you have chosen, that they might guide us in ways that are pleasing to you. We pray all of this in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Have pledged allegiance to the Lord of the United States of America and to his Father, who is his parent, one nation, under God. We will now go to our public comments on any item that will not be discussed this evening. Please state your name and address for the record.
Chris Loboski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. I believe today the public comment provision has been set statewide, goes into effect, and so other cities will finally be doing what Tarpon Springs has been doing for a long time, allowing public comments at the beginning of a meeting and allowing public comments after each item, even consent agenda items, which many cities were not allowing. And that's very unfortunate. It got me to thinking how wonderful it is that A, this is finally taking place so that other cities can have public input like we have here. And B, it got me to thinking about the other cities that I've spoken to that public comment and the differences, these very strange little differences. You know, Dunedin is very similar, they have a nice facility and they have a nice methodology. Clearwater, on the other hand, I don't know if you've seen their, the way they do it, but they have these flat screen TVs in there and they run it very much like a game show. I mean, they, instead of just saying present or here, they know, they're like hello. It's a very interesting situation. St. Pete, they actually, I mean, if memory serves, this was many years ago, I had to go through a metal detector to go in to City Hall. I was thinking to myself, I hope that we never get that scared of our federal citizens, that we never get so afraid of our fellow citizens that we would require them to go through a metal detector or a pat down to come in here and do what I'm doing right now. I mean, I don't know what they're so afraid of down there in St. Pete, you know. Um, and of course, you know, the county has a pretty decent method. Safety Harbor, that's an interesting one. They have a very good history of listening to what their citizens say and actually taking that into effect, which is great. And on those same lines, in that city of Safety Harbor, I believe it was Clay Colson of Citizens for Sanity who mentioned to them that if they have a project where they're going to be beautifying the city with trees, if at other places in the city, if they're taking trees down, they would save money moving those trees. So if any projects are happening in the city, and there is one on the agenda tonight that has a lot of trees in it, but I won't go into that, that's on the agenda. But that's something to look at, saving some of these trees and moving them. It's something Warren Westenberg, uh, Westenberga Tree Service was very good at, and he's no longer with us, but it still can be done, and his company and others still do this. So I'd like to keep that in mind, especially palm trees. You know, they're very easily moved and they're very precious and financially so as well. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, Anita Protas, 901 Bay Shore Drive. I would like to ask the Mayor and the Commission to give our high school band a letter of fair passage and goodwill when they go to New York to be in the Macy's Parade. When I was office, I was always writing for scouts, for groups going from the school, and what they do is they give it to the people in charge, or head, or the president of an organization, saying please accept our children from Tarpon High School, our band, we're very proud of them, and give them safe passage and safe, uh, uh, home in your, in your city. And if the mayor could talk to the bandleader and see we can send someone up there at one or two keys to the city, and I'm going to talk to the band director and send some things from Tarpon Springs, but a letter of safe passage and travel is always a good thing from a community where our young people come from. And I'm sure the clerk's office has copies of them from different mayors here in the community, and I'd like to see y'all do that for our bandchildren because they are really outstanding. And every night I enjoy sitting on my porch in the rocking chair, listening to them practice. It's really good. So please think about that, Mayor Archie, and it's a good PR for the city too.
Thank you.
Michael Pescudis, 623 East Tarpon Avenue. Um, you know, every time I come to this commission, I never come here with the intent of saying anything, but it always happens. Um, I think now that budgeting is over, um, I think the task that the commission needs to direct staff to start looking at is updating your sign ordinances. Technology, sign technology has changed significantly. Um, most recently, you can see the LED sign that's on, that's on Tarpon Avenue. If there are no restrictions on things like that, not that you want to see, you know, uh, Tarpon Avenue look like, uh, you know, 42nd Street or Vegas with all the LED signs, but I think as, as progress in sign technology has improved significantly, I think it's incumbent upon this commission to look at upgrading or modifying your sign ordinances to take advantage of the, uh, technology that's out there. Obviously, everything has to be done in case, but unless you put some qualified parameters on it, uh, you may not like what ends up happening because there's nothing in the current sign ordinances that if, for example, addresses signs such as the LED sign that's in the window. Um, and that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, one announcement is that item number 13 is deferred by the applicant until October 15th, um, 2013, if anybody's here for item number 13. Next we'll go to proclamations. Uh, item number one is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. This proclamation reads, whereas while considerable progress is made in the fight against breast cancer, it remains the most frequently diagnosed type of non-skin cancer and seconding cause of cancer death among women in our country. And whereas during National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we reaffirm our commitment to supporting breast cancer research and to educating all Americans about its risk factors, detection, and treatment. As we, as we display pink ribbons on our lapels, offices storefronts, we also support courageously fighting, uh, those courageously fighting breast cancer that honor the lives lost to this devastating disease. Whereas screening and early detection are also essential components of the fight against cancer. For women aged 40 and over, regular mammograms and clinical breast exams by health providers every one or two years are the most effective ways to find breast cancer early. And whereas during National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we stand with our mothers, daughters, sisters, friends, and we recognize all who have joined their loved ones in fighting their battle, as well as advocates, researchers, healthcare providers, whose care and hard work give hope to those living with breast cancer. By educating ourselves and supporting innovative research, we will improve the quality of life for all Americans affected by breast cancer and one day defeat this terrible disease. Now therefore, I, David Archie, by virtue of authority vested in me as the Mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2013 as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Item number two is Florida Green Building Coalition Shoot of Club Silver Recertification.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'll, I'll start this off. Um, back in 2008, the police department spearheaded an effort to get the city green certified. We worked with all the different departments in the city and we looked at our operations, and we were successful in getting a silver designation through the Florida Green Building Coalition, also known as FGBC. Um, we've maintained that certification. I believe our operations have gotten better and more environmentally, you know, friendly. And, um, we basically spearheaded another effort to recertify the city for another five years through the Florida Green Building Coalition. Um, Captain Young worked very hard at this project and did an excellent job along with some staff members of the police department. Um, city's operations are very environmentally friendly. Um, we did pass muster, if you will, and we are recertified, um, effective as of 2013 for another five years. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to a representative from the Florida Green Building Coalition to, uh, present you with, uh, with our designation. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Suzanne Cook, Executive Director for the Florida Green Building Coalition. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to recognize the City of Tarpon Springs for earning the five-year recertification. There are only four other local governments out of the 66 that are certified that have completed the five-year recertification program, so we're very proud to have you in that group. Um, Tarpon Springs, like, like, um, the police chief said, Tarpon Springs achieved 34% of its 357 applicable points, and that was a silver level designation. The program's criteria that goes with the certification program includes energy and water usage, air quality, health issues, land use, recycling and waste disposal, maintenance policies, education programs, purchasing policies, regulatory policies, and many other items. The designation demonstrates the leadership by Mayor David Archie and the other commissioners who set the framework and support for moving forward with this certification, so we congratulate them for that support. Um, in order to achieve the certification, Tarpon Springs staff, who is led by Jeff Young, Captain Jeff Young, undertook an extensive audit of all the operations that the city performs through each department. Um, one goal of that was to lead by example, for the city to lead by example, to encourage the private sector to apply the same principles through the creation of certified green homes, green buildings, green land developments, and their own individual sustainability practices. Bringing together the community businesses and residents with common objectives and overlapping interests can lead to integrated environmental solutions for your local community. Some specific green achievements at Tarpon Springs, uh, of Tarpon Springs include the incorporation of the environmental mission into the comprehensive plan, employed in green cleaning practices and maintenance procedures. They maintain a green fleet program for vehicles, which reduces the use of toxic solvents, recycles oil, and minimizes the, um, health risks to employees. They utilize renewable energy on local government buildings. They utilize solar or other energy efficient technologies in streetlights. Uh, they offered free or discounted green products to the public. Um, they adopted green certification programs as official green standards for the city. Um, they offer incentives for green land development, certified green land development, provide alternative commuting incentives to employees. Uh, they apply Florida-friendly landscape principles, which if you're not familiar with that, that is also applicable to homeowners. There is a website, just look for Florida-friendly programs. The importance of Florida-friendly landscaping practices is fertilizer and all of the grass clippings and other things can run off into your stormwater and into your natural water bodies and cause pollution. So you have a, a, a big part in how well you maintain and protect your natural resources. Um, they involve students in green projects outside of the school. They offer recycling services and education to multifamily dwellings. Uh, they created a reclaimed water infrastructure and, uh, converted waste to energy through their partnership with Pinellas County to utilize their waste stream and convert it to electricity. I also want to congratulate Jeff Young for being the only police department that has ever undertaken the certification process for a municipality, so well done. They're here to, I understand, the police department, I think your motto is what? Serve and protect, and they are definitely protecting your natural environment here, so great job. And with that, Mayor Archie, we'd like to present this to the city. And Jeff, we have a flag. Congratulations for your leadership and for your accomplishment.
Thank you.
And this is a flag that you can either use in the building or out on the platform.
We'd just like to thank, um, Ms. Cook for that effort, but also thank Captain Young and, uh, all of the police department under the leadership of Chief Coating for this effort. And it's good to know that we are the first, uh, police department to undertake an effort like this, so I'd say, uh, we really thank you for your hard work in making this happen.
Thank you, Mayor.
Are there any commission comments on this item? Any public comments? Seeing none, we'll go to item number three, PTEC presentation, Roland Bryant and Ray Gorman.
Good evening, Mayor Archie, city commissioners, citizens of Tarpon Springs. Mr. Bryant could not make it this evening. I'm Ray Gorman. Uh, it was two years ago that we came before this commission, and we talked about a Public Works Academy. We talked about a Public Works Academy here in Tarpon Springs. And as a commission, you embraced it, and we ran two pilot programs. It was successful, and as of September of this year, we had accreditation through the United States School Boards of Public Works and of Career Technical Education to go ahead and do the program here. So again, we thank you for your vision of doing that. Uh, the Public Works Academy, uh, for nearly 25 years has been committed to training individuals in public works, to be able to start their careers and be able to advance their careers. And as I said, the City of Tarpon Springs really needs to be commended for their commitment to public works because public works is the lifeblood of our community. It's the parks that we go and we relax in, it's the roads and the sidewalks we travel on, it's the water we drink, and that's just a few of the things that public works does to make modern life really possible. Your commitment to hosting that here has opened up the doors to many individuals here in the north part of the county who are unable to travel down to our PTEC campus in St. Pete to take advantage of this training. And those who have already taken it through there have been very successful. We're looking at over 70% placement rate, and some of them are working here at your city and nearby communities as well. So again, our commitment, our appreciation for your commitment, uh, we have a plaque for you, Mayor Archie, and for the city commissioners for your vision in supporting public work. So on behalf of PTEC, Pinellas County Schools, and the Public Works Academy, I'd like to present these.
We definitely want to thank you, you, Mr. Gorman, for your effort, and Mr. Bryant for his efforts, and Dennis Jock, uh, head of PTEC for bringing this, uh, helping to bring this to Tarpon Springs. And we definitely want to thank our city manager for facilitating, uh, Tarpon, the City of Tarpon, being a site that we can have a, uh, academy here. And Ray Page, Paul Smith, all of the employees that have really helped in bringing this about, you know. This was an opportunity to have something right within our city that will help to, um, educate, uh, our residents as well as the residents of North Pinellas County, so we really appreciate that. We're looking for other opportunities for PTEC to come up this way and to do some things that's going to benefit our residents, so we'd just say thank you for this plaque, and we thank you for all that you're doing to help us to be a better city. Thank you.
Thank you, we enjoy the partnership.
Any commission comments on this item? Any, uh, public comments? Hearing none, we'll go to item number four, and that's Beckett Bridge Project Update, uh, and Verna Bull, Project Manager, URS Corporation, and Tony Hornick, Project Manager, Pinellas County.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, it's been about a year since we've been here to, um, talk to you about this project, and unfortunately, I don't have any plaques to give you, but we'll at least give you some updated information. Um, Tony Hornick is here with us, he's the county project manager, and Jim Phillips is here, he's the chief bridge engineer, and he'll be helping me out with some of these slides tonight. Um, and we realized since this is the year, we might want to refresh your memory on the overall information about the project, introductory information, and there's probably some people in the audience that may not be familiar, so bear with me as I go through some of the introductory slides. As I'm sure most of you know, or if you don't, the Beckett Bridge is located in Tarpon Springs, and it crosses between bayou, and there are about 127 property owners along that bayou that use that bridge or have to go through that channel to get access to the Anclot River and eventually the Gotham, Mexico. Um, the bridge provides access from the historic area in the downtown of Tarpon Springs out to areas in the west like Howard Park. It is not officially designated as an, uh, does, uh, I'm sorry, as an emergency route, however, Tarpon Avenue is, so it is important for emergency evacuation. Now here's a closer look at the bridge. We have the Tarpon Springs Jack Club that I'm sure you're familiar with in the northeast side, and we also have the Bay Shore Movable Home Park on the southwest side. The rest of the area is primarily residences. The project extends from Chesapeake Drive on the west to Forest Avenue on the east. The bridge was constructed in 1924, it was originally a wooden bridge. Um, in the 50s, 56, it was reconstructed as a concrete bridge, and the only remaining parts from the 1924 bridge are the actual movable stand and the piers that hold that bridge up. Um, there were a lot of subsequent repairs, some as recent as 2011, and, um, some, and that, the machinery was replaced during that time. Um, the bridge has a efficiency rating of 44.7 out of 100. And some of the reasons for that is that it's considered functionally obsolete because it's a very narrow bridge, it has very narrow sidewalks, no bike lanes, and no shoulders. Um, there also are a number of structural deficiencies that causes the bridge to be low toasted, so our large school buses are not allowed to cross that bridge at this time, as well as other larger vehicles. The bridge was designed much earlier than the heavier vehicles that we have today. The typical structure, basically, right now, what you've got out there, you've got two 10-foot lanes, and you have two foot, two-inch sidewalks on both sides, so obviously, that's not a good situation, especially now with our emphasis on multimodal transportation. The Beckett Bridge was determined to be eligible for the National Register of Historic Places by both the SHIPPO, which is the State Historic Preservation Office, and the Federal Highway Administration. And the reasons for that are listed on the slide, but basically, I think of its, of its unique design and engineering, and also because it played an important role in the development of Tarpon Springs. The bridge provides six feet of vertical clearance for boats traveling under it and 25 horizontal. Um, it opens with a two-hour notice call to the county, and as you can see, between 2009, 2012, it opened at least one record between 10 and 20 times, so it doesn't open very often. Pinellas County started a project development environmental study in coordination with DOT in 2012. Um, we considered a number of alternatives. The first is no build, which basically means that you'll continue maintenance, regular maintenance, until the bridge is no longer serviceable, and then it would be taken out of service. The second is no build with permanent removal, which would mean once it becomes no longer serviceable, it would, there would be a decision made to permanently remove the bridge with no plans to replace it. The next is rehabilitation, and the rehabilitation alternative that we had presented at public workshops in January did not include widening the bridge. It just included replacement of the machinery and the electrical system, and also whatever was needed to construct some of the structural deficiencies. However, it still had the small sidewalks and the narrow lanes. We also looked at two replacement alternatives. One, um, was for a fixed bridge with 28 feet of vertical clearance, and the other was a movable bridge with 7.8 feet. In the fall of 2012, we visited a lot of the local stakeholders and local governments to get input on the community concerns for the project, and we developed a number of alternatives which we presented in January 2013 at a public meeting. We had about 135 people sign in, which is great. We had almost 77, at least 77, that actually wrote comments in our commentary. Now, if you're interested in a detailed summary of what people wrote, it is on the website, on the county's website, if you search for Beckett Bridge. Um, not everyone expressed a preference for alternatives, but of those that did, you can see that the majority favored either rehabilitation or replacement with a movable bridge. Um, additional concerns from the community included need for better pedestrian facilities. Um, they also expressed the need that the bridge should provide vertical clearance for all the boats that want to get out of the bayou and, and get into deeper water. They were concerned about the effect that the bridge would have on the character of the community, and they were very concerned about the length of the support. We established a cultural resource committee because the bridge is eligible for listing in the National Register. Um, this committee was made up of agencies, people from the Coast Guard, Federal Highway, DOT, SHIPPO, and also some of your community representatives. Um, we discussed the alternatives and looked at that in terms of understanding the, um, the importance of the bridge in terms of its historic nature. And one of these meetings, the SHIPPO and the committee requested us to look at two new rehabilitation options that would provide wider sidewalks because they recognized that the community needs that improvement over the long haul. So we looked at two. One was to widen the bridge to provide sidewalks on both sides, but still considered a rehab. And the other was to actually not widen the bridge, but reconfigure what's there so that we could provide a sidewalk on one side of the bridge. And now let Jim talk about this, since he did the detailed engineering analysis.
Just like to walk through the, the two new alternatives that were introduced in response to questions from the Cultural Resource Committee. So, starting with this, this, this again is the, the existing typical section, but this is looking at it on the movable stand, so it's slightly different. You can see that the sidewalk is an inch wider on the movable stand, but the other configuration is basically the same. And the reason we're focusing on this is because this is the, the real area of construction. As far as doing anything to widen the bridge or change it, the movable stand is much more difficult to deal with than the approach stands are. So, uh, the first is to look at a rehabilitation with widening. And what we did is we had a, a series of meetings to establish what is the minimum width of a bridge and configuration of the bridge that would be acceptable from a safety standpoint. So we, we developed a number of sections, we discussed them, looked at the controlling safety codes, and had meetings with both the county and the DOT. And this was determined to be a minimum configuration, which would be 14-foot, essentially the total lane width plus the shoulder, or 28-foot clear roadway, and a five-foot, six-inch wide sidewalk on each side. So you can see that, that gives us a, an overall width of 42 feet, switching back compared to... compared to the twenty-six foot eight of the existing bridge. So we went through some detailed analysis, looking at on a movable span, we have counterweights and balancing and machinery and those sort of things. We went through an analysis of all that. And we determined that to effectively widen the bridge to that minimum typical section would require replacement of the movable span and the bascule piers. These are the piers that support the span, the movable span portion and the counterweight. So as a result of that, if we implemented this, we'd essentially have no elements of the original bridge left to remain. So that's, that was the conclusion with, for widening. We also then looked at reconfiguring the section. The idea here would be to take that existing width and, as Ann said, rearrange it, shift the lanes to one side, put a sidewalk on one side. We also determined that this was also not feasible and would require replacement of the bascule span and piers. So again, with this, no elements of the original bridge would remain. Following the development of those two additional concepts, we developed the cost estimates for those and updated the other cost estimates. So original rehabilitation concept was nine and a half million dollars. Rehabilitation with widening was twelve and a half million dollars. Reconfiguration of the existing bridge was not feasible at all, so we didn't cost that. And the new movable bridge, or replacement of the existing bridge with a new movable bridge, was fifteen point eight million dollars. As a requirement of the federal guidelines on this, when you're looking at a movable bridge alternative, you also have to consider life cycle costs. So we updated the life cycle costs. And the results of that is that it's more cost effective to replace the bridge now rather than rehabilitate it now and replace it at a future date. So this is looking at over a 100-year period. Again, more cost effective to replace it now, meaning as soon as we could get around to it, which is estimated at 2020, than to rehabilitate now and replace it in the future.
So after we presented all this information to SHIPP, what they determined was that we had sufficient evidence to support the opinion that a new bridge would be better and preferable to rehabilitating the existing bridge. And they also stated that if the new bridge, if the bridge existing was removed, that we would be required to do mitigation. So with that, we also did take a look again at the new movable bridge. Again, these are the two alternatives that were most supported by the community. And so we did take a look at that, and then we made some very small changes. And if you haven't, if you probably don't remember everything about it, we'll go over some of it. But the biggest change was that we have five and a half foot sidewalks. And based on comments from DOT and the community and other groups, we did move, make the sidewalk six feet to, not a big change. But anyway, just to review, a new movable bridge, as we proposed and as we presented at our January meeting, would not require any right-of-way. We wouldn't have to acquire any property. There would be no impacts right-of-way. The vertical clearance will be just slightly more than existing, about seven point eight feet. The horizontal will be the same, and the total width will be forty-seven point two, which is a lot wider than the existing bridge. We have eleven-foot travelings and six foot sidewalks. And actually, we have a typical there. And we would have the five point five foot shoulders that could operate as undesignated bicycle lanes. And the roadway, I'm pointing these out because there is some difference on the roadway on both sides. East of the movable bridge, we have fifty feet of right-of-way. So we're able to have that same typical section on the east side. On the west side of the road, however, we only have about forty feet of right-of-way, so we can't fit a sidewalk in on both sides. So we're not continuing that sidewalk from the bridge. We just paper it off on the side where the mobile home park is. And this is the same concept that we did present earlier at the workshop. And now I'm going to let Jim talk it in, because one of the things we want to point out is if you went to the workshop, and unfortunately, today, we don't, well, we have one, but probably don't have time, if you saw the animations that we did, and again, you can see them on the website, the bridge that we showed was a very generic DOT bridge. But we want to show you that it can look much better than that. So Jim can talk about that.
Yeah, just to reiterate that, right now, at this point in the project, there is no commitment on exactly what the bridge is going to look like. Essentially, the alternatives define the type of bridge and the general configuration of the roadway, sidewalk, et cetera, but the aesthetics of the bridge are to be determined in the design phase. But as a result of our meetings with the Cultural Resources Committee, we did identify some possibilities. And one of the things we looked at as appropriate would be something that's similar to the existing bridge, which would fall in the sort of industrial type of look. We also pointed out that many of these historic bridges that were built in the same period and designed by the same firm, this is the Scherzer Rolling Lift Company, were developed with a modern or art-modern style to them. So this is the existing bridge, which is very industrial. In other words, it's essentially a functional bridge without any real consideration for any type of a style. And we could replace the bridge, and if you're just kind of toggling back and forth, again, existing bridge and then a new bridge with, again, a rolling lift bascule in that industrial style would be, sort of have the same overall impact on the site visually. What was shown at the alternatives workshop was a generic movable bridge. And this, again, is essentially a bridge using standard sort of DOT components for bridge rails and the bascule piers are just made out of concrete. There hasn't been anything done to it aesthetically yet. And that's intentional because we don't want to imply that we've selected a style at this point in the process. Just a couple other views showing, again, what the industrial style would look like, very similar to the existing bridge, although we have done a few things here with the approach spans to kind of clean up the lines of the bridge a little bit, make it look a little less cluttered than the original existing bridge does. For the CRC, we developed some 3D models, and these are models of the, that sort of industrial style. Again, the bridge, you know, what's typical of this style is all the elements of the bridge that move, the machinery, counterweight, et cetera, all visible elements of the bridge. Again, just more views of the same. And these are, these are just some photos of similar bridges of the same time period. Again, these are kind of the industrial style look of a single-leaf rolling bascule. These have an overhead counterweight, which is a little different than bicycle foot. Another one. And then bridges that, again, that same period of the modern style, you can see they're a little more ornamented. Some of these are quite nice. The work has been done, both with the concrete and steel on them. This is a bridge of similar size to Beckett that's up in the Jacksonville area, also a rolling lift bascule, the art-modern style.
All right. I know we're throwing a lot at you, but we're trying to get through a lot here. But basically, as I stated, if we did remove the existing bridge, the SHIPP would require mitigation. I've already indicated that they would require the standard type of mitigation, which is called the Historic Historic Engineering Record, where you create a record of the existing bridge with large format photos and things, and it is saved by the state, so that information is always available. In addition, though, we need input from the community on other types of mitigation, because we will be required to do more than that if we remove the bridge. One is that we can select a bridge rail, a type of rail, which has some pictures on the next slide, that might help preserve the viewshed, because that's important from the historic perspective, what that viewshed of the existing bridge. And it's a rail that you can see through rather than drive over the bridge and not be able to see over it. Another option is to make some type of educational kiosk about the historic bridge. You can either do it off-site or on or near the bridge. The SHIPP very much prefers it to be on or near the bridge. You might construct a second patrol house and put something there. Another option is to possibly incorporate some portion of the original bridge into the new bridge. Here's some examples, some open rails on other bridges, just that simply it's not that standard rail that you can't see through. This was at Fraser Island, we worked on this one. We developed a plan for putting a monument in a community park. And this bridge was unique that its rail was one of the aesthetic aspects, was one of the historic aspects of the bridge. So we removed that and then created a faux bridge in the park. And this is one, the SHIPP and the CRC was very excited about. This is an example in Seattle that Jim worked on, where they took the machinery and they took that into the design of the rail. So that way, it would be appropriate here, because some of that machinery is actually some of the older parts of the bridge. But these are just some ideas. And throughout the process, and as we have our public hearing, we would appreciate any ideas from the community about what we could do. So just to finalize, to kind of summarize where we are, SHIPP concurd that the movable bridge was preferred over rehab. The project team determined that the fixed bridges are not feasible. Now, we haven't talked a lot about them, and I'll go real quickly and tell you why. And then Federal Highway has also concurred that we, that the rehabilitation and the fixed alternatives are not feasible. And that might not sound like a big deal, but that's what we've been doing the last seven months, coordinating with these agencies. And here are the reasons why the fixed alternatives would not be further considered. The viable, the Coast Guard determines that the twenty-eight-foot vertical clearance does not meet the needs of navigation for the area. There would be substantial right-of-way impact. There will be substantial visual impact. It's not consistent with historic character of the neighborhood due to the large mass of structure. It would require the longest detours or construction, and the cost is comparable to the movable bridge. And again, if you haven't seen this, go on our website, and we have all kinds of renderings, and you can see how that bridge looks. So what are we going to do for the future here, our next steps? We're going to go back to our CRC and update them on all our coordination with SHIPP. Then the county's next move is to select a recommended alternative and present that to the Board of County Commissioners at the next meeting in October. So October 22nd, they will be making a recommendation, so you're invited to attend that. After those concurrence from the BCC, then we will also go to the NPO and their advisory board to provide early input on the project. And then we have to update our documents. And then we will be presenting the recommended alternative at a public hearing. It will be a large-scale meeting, probably at the yacht club, similar to what we had in January. And it'll probably be this coming February, because there's a lot of documentation related to the historical nature of the bridge that we have to finish. And hopefully, after we go through all of these efforts, we'll be able to submit final documents to DOT and Federal Highway and get approval. So thank you for your patience, and if you have any questions, we'll live ask them. Answer them.
Well, what I like to do is, I know that we have a few people in the audience that would like to have some comments. So we're going to go to public comments, then we'll have the commission comments. Anyone that'd like to have any comments, please come forward, state your name, address for the record, and you are given up to four minutes.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Cindy Terrapini. I'm here tonight in my role as President of the Tarpon Springs Area Historical Society. And as you know, the Historical Society has previously sent a letter both to the city and to the county, encouraging the rehabilitation and not the demolition of this historic, important historic resource. What they didn't tell you, but is very clear if you read all the documents, there are only seven historic bascule bridges like this left in the entire state of Florida. And the one in Tarpon Springs is the oldest of those seven, built in 1924. And that is why the Historical Society recommended rehabilitation. I was a member of, I guess I still am, who knows? It's not really clear from this presentation whether or not the Cultural Resources Committee is going to be involved. They said they were, but at our last meeting in March, the discussion there and the agreement at the end was that all of this analysis was to come back before, back to the Cultural Resources Committee before a decision was made by the county. With the county meeting already set for October 22nd and today being the first, unless we're having a meeting really quickly, it doesn't seem like that's happening. Sure seems to me like they're putting the cart before the horse and making a decision. It's very clear that the consultants have already decided what their preferred alternative is. I think there's some parts of the analysis that are not complete, that they didn't even price out how much it would cost to rehabilitate the existing bridge. You can't even do that comparison in your own mind and see how much, is it less? Is it more? Is it about the same? We don't know because they didn't do that analysis. So I just would encourage you to, obviously, I know you all are going to stay involved. We will stay involved as a Historical Society. And if there is another Cultural Resources Committee meeting, I certainly will attend and participate. And I thank you for letting me speak today. Thank you.
Anita Prost, 901 Bay Shore Drive. I cross that bridge sometimes, ten times a day. First of all, the bridges that she showed are Yankee bridges. We're the south. We're the south. And this bridge is a southern bridge of great historic value. No Yankee bridges. It was hard to understand you because you were facing there, and you weren't in the mic, and you talked fast, but you did a good job. But that's all right. And the railing to side here, that's very important in looking at southern bridges. Since this started, I've been getting books and going and researching. The type of bridge we have now is very indicative to the historic value of Tarpon Springs. No metal railings. It just doesn't fit in with what we've got. And did I understand you to say you're not going to be taking any property from the mobile home park or the home across the street or from the yacht club? In any of those areas? That's a good thing for the property owners. But I urge the county to look. Down county, they did reserve the right to preserve a bridge down there. I don't remember where it is, but it was on TV, and the citizens did not want that bridge changed, and the county didn't change it. Well, we've told them up here what we want, and you really need to do research and study that what we've got is very important. It's a Florida bridge, it's a southern bridge, and you go throughout the south and you see the type of bridges. It's just like this. And this is what we really want, you know? And let it open to let the boats sit and out. It's very important to Tarpon. It just seems, you know, it boggles my mind. People come down here because they love what we have. Then after a few years, they want to change everything. Then why did you come here to begin with? And the same thing with the county. Tarpon has given the county a lot of historic preservation issues, and we've given them a lot in this county. Let us keep what we have in our beauty, and that's very important to us. And I know as one taxpayer, that's what I want. I can't speak for everybody, but walking through the community, that's what they're saying, and they need to come here. And we had one county commissioner that came to Rotary and spoke to us on the bridge, and he did, because I got up and asked the question, and he did say that we were going to keep the old and you were just going to improve on it. Now, what's happened? It's changing. And this was the county commissioner that gave that statement at Rotary. So someone, a little mixed up someplace here.
Mike, this is 163 East Tarpon Avenue. Actually, the questions that I had were already answered with regard to the impact on the residents that are near the bridge, as whether or not any of that would be a taking of any of that property. So I appreciate the presentation. It was actually a good presentation. My, again, my biggest concern was, was any taking of the property. But to the extent, if the bridge is replaced, and, you know, I like the idea, and that's why I'm up here to speak, is making the bridge a work of art, if that's what the ended decision happens to be, utilizing some of the components of the old bridge into the new bridge. The other question I have is, I noticed that the bridge opens maybe ten or eighteen times a year. And I'd like to apply for the job as a bridge tender, you know, a way it can work ten to eighteen times a year. But in all just, you know, again, in the event that the city finds that it's going to, or the county finds that they are going to replace the bridge, the idea of incorporating parts of the old bridge as to like a piece of art, I think would be appreciated in this community. But I agree with Anita in that, you know, that there's something to be said about the old bridges crossing over it the many times that I have in, you know, in my youth and even today. But I understand that safety is paramount. So thank you.
Bill Vincent, 144 North Spring Boulevard, Tarpon Springs. First of all, I want to
First of all, I want to thank David Banther for posting on Facebook yesterday that there was going to be this presentation. I went to the presentation that it was at the yacht club, I don't know how many months ago, and a lot of people showed up, good turnout. And I'm just disappointed that there wasn't a notice other than the notice I got from David Banther on Facebook that this would be here. I presume that those who attended that gave their names and addresses and maybe emailed to the, to the county or to the engineers. It would have been nice to have a better notice so that folks could come here and see the presentation. It was very informative and would have been nice to have a better turnout. And I, I think that's something that not only the county, but the city can work on is better communications with residents who are affected by your projects. Thank you.
Robert Faison, four oh eight Riverside Drive, Tarpin Springs. So that's my house, right next to that bridge on the northwest corner, right across the street from the yacht club and the Mobile Home Park. So likewise, I didn't know about this meeting either until last minute and thank God for Anita letting us, letting us know that this is going to be discussed at this meeting. And that's kind of been the trend. We find out about these things last minute. I also voiced my concerns at the meeting at the yacht club and have not heard a word. So this to me just sounds like there's a lot of things going on that we as a community are not aware of. And particularly this has direct impact to my house and my livelihood that I feel like I should at least know these things are going on. And now there's a meeting on October twenty-second to discuss next steps. I think that's not appropriate for us and I think we should be given much more notice. But the, um, the suggestions of what to do with this bridge, to me, not only from a historical perspective, from a personal perspective, that property that I live now has been in my family since the early nineteen hundreds. And so it has not only historical value, but very, uh, very strong sentimental value. You know, my, my grandparents grew up there, my dad grew up there. So this is, um, this is something that I really want us to take long at heart of how it impacts our community and what we are very proud of here in Tarpin Springs. What I saw, I would not be very proud of. I would not want to see metal railings. I would not want to see something that's modernized that takes away the small town feel that I think that's why we're here. So a lot of that's been said, but had this meeting been advertised, I think there would have been a lot more people in the audience that would also be voicing their concerns. And I think this meeting on October twenty-second is, is too short a time for us to be able to voice our opinion. Thank you.
Tomitj Soliveras, four nine five Riverside Drive, also business owner of the town. I just had a few questions. What is our safety issue with that area? Do we have accidents? What's the report look like? Have we had accidents in the area? Have we had pedestrians get hurt there? How many times has that happened? And because I grew up around this area and like so many people here, that bridge means a lot to this town. As a business owner, I have people that come to our restaurants that are groups that they actually travel United the country going over bridges. And they actually came to Tarpin just to go over Beckett Bridge because of, it's like one of only a few left and especially in the nation. So I believe we should really think back, think hard on this and I still didn't see any prices for rehabilitating it. I just saw removal and, but how much would it cost to just maintain it and keep it the way it is? Thank you.
How are you all doing? Dan Chulu, four twenty-sixth and Stride, Tarpin Springs. You know, I went and attended all those meetings back in March and I appreciate you all coming up. Thank you very much. And I respect my fellow citizens and neighbors and respect what they say about the, the old bridge and the feeling and the historical value and I totally respect that. I overlook this bridge every morning, every night, every minute. I overlook that bridge constantly. It's a beautiful bridge. I also travel that bridge and it's not an enjoyable travel over that bridge. I go under that bridge often in my boat. That boat, that bridge is in deplorable condition. I respect the county's position and I initially supported repair of the existing bridge. Having gone back to that bridge over and over again, I see people in their wheelchair trying to cross that bridge. It's an impossible event for them to cross that bridge without, if you will, dealing with the cars going over that bridge. I see bicycles going over that bridge. That's a challenge for bicycles going over that bridge. We don't have sidewalks that feed it. We have a roadway that doesn't feed it properly. The county indicated to me one-on-one that with the new bridge, we get new roads, the roads will be improved. Nothing sort of going to happen with the roads that they currently stand under the current bridge. With all that in consideration and I do respect the historical value, I want a new movable bridge and I changed my position on that. And I would love to see a new bridge where we can have the fire trucks come over that bridge. We could have the school buses come over that bridge. We could have the paramedics and the emergency vehicles coming over to service the nursing homes just over there on Chesapeake Drive. And I respect the neighbors that reside right there on the corner of that bridge. But it's time for us to make that change for the betterment of this community. It feeds out all the way to the west coast. You come around the other side, the bridge over there on Woodcomb Boulevard, that bridge is going to probably need some restoration very shortly because of the traffic flow that's going there and the weight of the vehicle going over that bridge. I think it's time for us to replace that bridge with a movable bridge. I'm glad you've eliminated the fixed structure. And that's just one person's opinion. Thank you very much.
Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll go to, uh, commission comments. First thing I'd say before I open up to my colleagues is that, you know, the bridge itself is very important to a lot of residents, you know, whether it's the ones that wanted to be kept the same as far as historical, whether it's the ones that feel, as Mr. Chulu mentioned, that it should give greater accessibility to all the residents, including the bicyclists or the people that might be handicapped, but it's very, very important. One of the things that I want everybody to know is that this commission did not set the October twenty-second meeting. If you don't like it, there's a county commission that you can voice your disapproval to. Also, this commission would not be making the decision whether it's historical, whether it's movable, fixed, whatever, you know. So if individuals within this audience or people that are listening and to the one that Mr. Benson had talked about, uh, this being short notice and the rest, the people that want to can access it from the website to look at the presentation. I assume that it's going to be on the county's website too, um, to see exactly what's being proposed and then on October twenty-second, you can go and voice your opinion to the county commission and see if whatever you desire can, can happen then. But I, I kept hearing, I guess it's, uh, SHPO you said? Can you just tell us, who, who is that? Who, who are they? And, you know, I know you said there are some people from Tarpin that might be on it, but I'm not sure.
The SHPO is a State Historic Preservation Office. That is a state agency. The Need for Process, which is the National Environmental Policy Act, is what drives this whole study and you have to follow that process in order to get federal funding, to be eligible for federal funding. So that's why we are going through this process so that the county has an opportunity to get federal money as well as local money to help build or whatever they decide to do with the new bridge. So SHPO is an important player in the federal arena. They, because they are the ones that determine based on the research that our consultants did for us and review that, whether it's eligible for listing. They also are very involved in approving whether or not the bridge can be removed and if it can be removed, what will have to happen in order for us to mitigate that. And so I want to point out that really for the last six months, what we have been doing is we have taken the recommendations from that CRC committee, which has SHPO representatives and Ms. Terrapini was on there as well as other people. And we have been looking at ways to address the concerns they had. And one of them was, let's try to find a way to keep that same older bridge, but let's provide better sidewalks because that's very important for the future of the community. And so we did a lot of extra analysis and a lot of extra engineering to try to come up with other rehab alternatives that might work for the community. And I don't think you can appreciate the depth of them. They're very involved and, you know, Jim and his staff had done a lot of engineering to see if these were possible. And what we were trying to show you was that, that it was determined that we really can't widen it at all or can't provide sidewalks without destroying everything about the bridge that was originally there. So SHPO will actually can say, if SHPO says we can't, you know, we can't, they actually really wanted, just like some of the people in the community, to preserve this bridge. But they've come to the conclusion that it's not the best option because of some of the engineering constraints, the bridge has a lot of engineering problems in terms of load capacity and shifting and there are a lot of issues why this bridge is not the best candidate for rehabilitation. And we have studied this much more than we had anticipated we would be studying it to make sure that we addressed all the issues.
So right now there is no, uh, thought of going back to the committee that Ms. Tarpin was on?
No, I have actually in my slide, I apologize that I talked fast. You could have stopped me anytime. I would have been happy to try to slow down. But we will be going back to the CRC. We've been looking at all of the issues that they recommended, but we've had to coordinate directly with SHPO and Federal Highway on a lot of these engineering issues and we will be going back to them to address their concerns. But it won't be prior to the October twenty-second meeting.
Did you say it's prior to that or?
It will not be, no. But one of, one of those things-
The decision will probably be made when you go back to the eleventh.
Well, we're not making a decision. What, what the staff is doing, they're recommending an alternative to take forward to the public hearing. Now, the, the public will, everyone that is on that mailing list and everybody, we sent out five thousand invitations to the other meeting, they will also get an invitation to that public hearing. And that is another opportunity for everyone in the community to see that this is where we're headed and what is your concerns and what are your inputs. So it's not like it's a done deal. We still have to take it to the BCC and see, you know, what their recommendation is and then we also have to take it back to the public and there'll be another large-scale public meeting and an opportunity.
So just for my, uh, understanding, the twenty-second will be another presentation like this to the county commission?
It'll be a brief presentation.
Right.
But yes, it will be.
They won't make a decision at that meeting. They will just see the presentation or will they make a recommendation at the meeting?
They will make a recommendation of which alternative to go forward with to the public hearing.
And then at the public hearing, the one that they choose will be shown to the public?
Along with the, there will be still information about the other ones and the process that we went through and there will be opportunity for the public to speak at that hearing.
And then after that public hearing, there will be another meeting that the county commission will make the final decision or what's going to be the process then?
Um, I mean, I'm not, yeah, I, I'm not sure if the county will need to approve it again, but I, I can check them out for you. But basically, yes, I would assume we would have that.
I, I don't know. Well, I'm, I'm trying to just get at, just for everybody to understand the flow and I'm kind of lost myself. Because in a sense, it seemed like to me, from my perspective, that the twenty-second, when the county commissioners make their decision, the decision will be final, you have a public hearing, but if you're not going to bring it back to the county commission again, then it's only one to tell everybody what the decision is. I mean, they might have two or three options to look at, but if they've already selected one, I, I mean, if that's not the case, then if you can let us know, um, you know, just so people will know that they need to be there on the twenty-second if they really want to be heard. Uh, if, you know, because after that, it seemed like it's, it's almost like it's a done deal. We'll let you know exactly what we're going to do, but we've done it.
Well, basically up till now, we've taken all the input that we've had and obviously there are a lot of different opinions and we've tried to address those and do the evaluation and come up with, the staff will come up with that recommendation to, you know, for what is the best alternative to go forward. And we realize you can't please everyone. But as far as the process, um, after the public hearing, all of the comments, actually there'll be a court reporter there that will record everything that's said. There will be a chance for you to write in comments to, just like we did at the workshop. And all of those will have to be evaluated again and then, yes, there would have to be a final decision by the county. And not only that, then all of those documents, with all of that documentation of the public input has to go to the Federal Highway Administration and they were the ones that will make the final decision whether that is appropriate or not. So it's not up to the commission in the end. It's actually up to Federal Highway.
All right. Uh, and I'm not trying to give you a hard time, just trying to get better understanding for everybody. And one of the things is, is definite is that, uh, if nothing happens and that bridge fails, everybody's going to be upset, you know, and that's just the way it goes. The other thing is that no matter what choice is made, when that bridge is out of commission, everybody's still going to be upset because they're going to want it to, to be one that's expedited, it's one that we probably will get lots of calls and emails that, why are we as a commission taking so long with the bridge? Because it's in Tarpin, people think that this commission has a real oversight over that bridge, which we don't. So I, I was just asking those questions so everybody have a better understanding and know that, that October twenty-second meeting is going to be a meeting that people should be to, to voice their opinion.
And with that, I'll go to Commissioner Banter. Thank you for coming out here tonight. I placed this on, on the, on the agenda because there was kind of a radio silence about this issue from the last meeting we had at, at the yacht club. And I'm, I'm kind of upset to hear that the, the, I know it's not a final meeting, but from what you say, the recommendation on, on the, on the twenty-second will kind of be carried down and most likely approved. I doubt they would, uh, recommend something that the, um, highway, you said division, whatever is going to reject back. I do support the, the, uh, the, the, uh, the rehab option. I think we're different, we are different here in Tarpin Springs. When you move to Tarpin Springs, you understand you are moving to a Historical Society here. We are not in a, you know, Clearwater or a more modern city. And with that comes some things that, um, aren't exactly ideal. It doesn't look like it, but I do ride my bike and I, I, when I go over the bridge by, by Woodcomb, I don't ride over, I, I, I walk over. That's some, I'm a more, more of the habit to make that, that kind of sacrifice to have these more historical bridges. My two main concerns, and one, one I've addressed is the, um, issue of, and I thank you all so much for removing that fixed span option, which was absolutely horrid for Tarpin Springs. That was my main concern. And my second main concern was the effective property owner, especially if y'all had to be in the domain or whatever, take their property from them. And you said under the plan that I guess they'll move forward on the twenty-second, no one will have to give up their property?
Correct.
But there surely will be impacts to their property in some way. There's just impossible for them-
There'll be impact during construction in terms of inconvenience and, but there won't be access issues and they will not take the property.
I would just ask if the county would have the courtesy of working with the, the, because it's not that many of the yacht club, the gentleman and the audience tonight and the Mobile Home Park and there's another, uh, newer home with a fence around it, if they could work with those communities, you know, um, uh, uh, kind of above and beyond during that, during that kind of a process, to keep them aware of, of, um, when, the, when things will happen and of what's going to go on. Um, also, um, since it kind of looks like you're moving towards, you know, kind of replacing the bridge to have it moved to, to the movable type, I would ask that, um, for, you know, the many reasons that we're speaking here tonight, that you do, as you mentioned, and there were some beautiful examples, take whatever you can of, of, of this historic bridge and preserve it, maybe work with the CRC on that, I mean, if that's the correct acronym, and, um, get the community involved in that. I think you'd get a little bit more buy-in. And I think it, and, and it does boil down to communication and that's why I put this on the agenda because I, and I had no clue about the meeting. And that's why I put this on the agenda, because I, and I had no clue about the meeting on the, on the, on the twenty second.
That meeting was just decided like yesterday, so by the county that that's when the next commission meeting would go. Because in order to move forward with the project, we've been on hold for a very long time in terms of what the public's involvement's been. But that's because we have been addressing concerns from Federal Highway. We had to go through, there's been a lot of hooches to convince them that the fixed bridge was not better because it costs more.
And I appreciate that.
So we did that and we've also very seriously taken into consideration the rehabilitation options and done a lot more engineering to try to find a way to see if that would be preferable. And I just also want to point out one other thing. And there will be no decisions about what the bridge would look like if that's what goes forward during this phase of the study. Um, if that is what happens and there is a design phase after this, then there would be, um, an opportunity, I'm sure the county would, you know, may have a committee and have representation and have public meetings to get input on what that bridge should look like.
That was very-
There are absolutely no, no, these were just some ideas we threw out. It could look like Treasure Islands bridge. It could look like anything you want. And these were just some ideas because the rehab was so popular. We looked at some options where we could make the bridge be very similar in style and design and type and the look, so it wouldn't destroy the neighborhood. But all of that is up to the community and the county, so that's the problem.
Well, again, I prefer the rehab option, but I'm also realist, I don't think that's what's going to happen. So again, like I said, if you could, um, you know, that sounds good what you said afterwards. Work with the CRC, work with the community on, when you come to the, to the, the, the design parts of the bridge, have it look as, you know, it's new but historical as possible, I guess. And also, I do urge everyone to contact their county commissioner here in Tarpon Springs. Ours is District Four, I believe, correct, or District Four here? I did contact ours here, I did not get a response back. I did contact, well verbally, though, um, though in person, one, one, one of our at-large commissioners that spoke at Rotary and he was very responsive and helpful. But I do urge every, everyone to email their commissioners, I can meet you on through the website, like you can us as well.
Yeah, we will be hopefully updating that website soon. Again, a lot of things just happened. We just finally got some, you know, answers from agencies.
And I appreciate that, but this has a big impact on, 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 on this community. So faster that can happen, the better.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Lawson?
Thank you.
Uh, I also have a couple of questions and comments. Uh, first, I'd like to thank Commissioner Banter for placing this important item on the agenda. Uh, and I'd like to thank Ms. Venables for being here and for providing the update. Could you talk a little bit more about the CRC, the Cultural Resource Committee? Who exactly is that? And I know you went over briefly before. And also, how often have they met? I'm sorry for interrupting.
No, I'm sorry, my fault. Um, no, the committee was put together to, um, address some of the issues associated with the, um, the fact that the bridge is restored, so that we could get some more input of people that had either an interest or a lot of, in a lot of the case, the agencies are very involved in making decisions. So who, the people that were on it were the Coast Guard, because they have, um, a role in approving a permit for this bridge. And they also are the, the agency that determines what alternative meets the needs of navigation. So the Coast Guard was on that committee, the TIPPO representative for our next committee. I can send you a list if you want, we have a list of members. Um, there was also the, um, Federal Highway Administration, also the DOT, because they were doing the same coordination, um, the county, some of your representatives, I think our city manager from City of Tarpon Springs, then Representative Ms. Terrapini from the Historic, um, Society, and then Peggy, whose name's last name, I apologize, it's been a while since we've met, who was also just representing the general community in the area and, um, and the county, county representatives as well. And we met once, um, I don't remember our first meeting, but it was prior to March, very early, just to introduce the project. Then the second meeting was in March of two thousand thirteen. And that was where we had gotten a lot more input about, you know, we want rehab, but we'd also like to have some of these other features. So since then, we have been trying to address those issues. So, and, and, you know, it is, that part, that is what we're charged to do, is to take into consideration those comments and then evaluate and try, you know, to address them. But we, we plan to go back to that committee and update it on all the results.
So the committee met twice thus far?
Yeah.
And when is the next scheduled meeting?
We haven't scheduled it yet. Again, a lot of things just happened. We have just established our schedule for commission meetings and MPO meetings and all the things that we're required to do, you know, to meet the MPO regulations.
I guess what I'm trying to figure out is whether or not it would be possible for this committee, the CRC, to meet prior to this October twenty second meeting? Because it sounds like any feedback that you would receive from the CRC really would only be beneficial if that feedback was received prior to October twenty second.
Um, that might be a possibility, we can discuss that. But I'm not sure if we can get all those agencies and everyone's schedules, um, involved.
Well, you had mentioned that you would be going, getting back with them at some point in the future.
Right.
Um, and I know this is kind of along the same lines of what the mayor was asking. It just seems to me, any, any feedback that you get after October twenty second from them really is, is too late to do anything with that feedback, although maybe I'm not understanding the timeline.
Well, I mean, there's a lot of other things that need to be addressed if, um, well, basically, remember that TIPPO is part of the Cultural Resource Committee and they're the ones that make a decision, you know, about whether or not the bridge can be removed and Federal Highway. So, you know, they have determined that that is possible, that the rehab is not the best alternative. Um, however, we do, you know, we do plan to go back and update the committee. Um, we didn't really, when we got asked to come to this meeting, we didn't really even know what we were going to have to tell you, except that we're still working on it. So a lot of things just happened recently. And that's why the commission meeting was, um, scheduled.
Well, and again, we appreciate you coming. I think the, the people that are here this evening, um, appreciate having the update. The other, the other comment that I wanted to make was in regards to notification to our residents or, or lack of notification to our residents. Um, I think from my standpoint, I kind of assumed this being a county project, that the county would be, uh, more involved with notifying Tarpon residents that there was this meeting here tonight. Um, that didn't really happen, apparently. Uh, but I kind of feel like we, as the city, drop the ball here a little bit as well. I think in the future, you know, when we have a project that's as important as this to our residents, we should be utilizing things like our Facebook page. I know Commissioner Banter used his, it sounds like, which is a good thing. But I think the city should be utilizing our Facebook page. Uh, we have, uh, an email blast that we send out, I don't know, once a month or something. We, we should be utilizing, you know, that email list as well. Um, we've got the electronic sign, I believe, one on Alter Nineteen and one on, uh, Tarpon Avenue. I, I really feel like in the future, that we kind of dropped the ball in terms of notification and I regret that in the future. I, I think on an issue that's as important as this, the people probably want to come and provide their thoughts. I really think in the future, we need to try to do a better job of, uh, of notifying the public. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Oh, so much to Tarpon. Thank you. I also want to thank, uh, representatives from the county for coming and especially members of the public who are in attendance and especially those who got up and spoke. Um, as you can see from the presentation, data is being taken on when you come to these meetings or when you voice your opinions, um, so it certainly matters. So thank you for that. Um, conceptually, I think the project has come a long way, um, as a whole. I think it's certainly comforting to me to know that the fixed span, um, option is off the table. Um, that was concerning to me for a number of reasons. Number one, repairing rights to the property owners along the bayou, um, the M the Domain takings that would have had to occur, um, as well as, uh, the, you know, the aesthetic look of the fixed span was just, just so far above and beyond what's acceptable to this community. So I'm pleased to see that that option is no longer, um, on the table, even being discussed or, or really being presented. Um, based on some of the feedback that we've got from the community and also, uh, what I'm seeing in the presentation, I think the biggest component moving forward is certainly the historic value of the existing bridge versus, um, the new bridge. Mr. Chulu raises a great point in the sense that, you know, we can, we can have a new bridge that'll function in terms of buses going over or emergency vehicles going over. And we can also embrace the new bridge with the widening of sidewalks, which makes it easier for pedestrians to cross or, um, even, even the handicapped to cross. So, so that's, if you're looking at the good and the bad, that aspect is, is all good. Um, you know, certainly the, the bridge does have its, um, historic components. I mean, it's, um, I think Dimitri mentioned that there is a group, um, that rides across the country just to cross over historic bridges. So, I mean, I didn't know that exists, but I mean, that's nice to know that there's members of the, of the greater public out there who, who, uh, feel like historic bridges have that kind of significance. Um, I think that it comes down really to this point to the two options, which are, um, maintain or rehabilitate the existing bridge and not have the option of having the sidewalks or construct a new movable bridge and have the options of the sidewalks. Um, and that's really going to come down to members of the public communicating to the county and also this commission and the extent that it can to the county and those elected officials on what's important, uh, to us as a, as a community. Um, it's comforting to know, again, that, that if we do decide to go with a new bridge, that there are components of the old bridge that can be incorporated, whether it's a monument, some form of a design element. Um, I think the last thing that we want to do, um, is compromise our historic character, um, with, with a newer, more modern looking type of bridge with aluminum guardrails. Um, so that would really be, be my feedback as, as someone on this commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I, I too want to thank you for coming and, um, doing this presentation. I, I would, uh, ask that after everyone makes their decision and we start talking about design and the rest of it, that you will keep the commission as well as the community involved in that process and how that's going to take place. Uh, sometime you try to do, uh, make the best out of what might be sitting in a bad situation. But I say to the people that are in the audience and the other ones that are at home, whatever your opinion might be, whether it's for the historical, uh, aspect of the bridge or whether it's for removable, but it's going to be important that, that meeting on the, uh, October twenty second is one that you're going to need to, uh, make your, uh, opinions known. And as Commissioner Banter talked about, calling the county commissioners, emailing them, um, I don't mind, you're forwarding your email that you sent to us, but it's going to be them that makes that decision or at least make the recommendation to the state, which I believe that they will take whatever decision that the county makes and move on it. So with that, we thank everybody for, uh, your coming. You have something else?
Yeah. If I could, just to follow up on a few points, um, and really just for clarification for everyone. Um, one, I wanted to go over the costs real quick. There were some questions about that and, uh, we may have gone over it rather fast, but the, uh, the new movable bridge was fifteen point eight million. The ori, the original rehabilitation concept, which had no widening, was nine and a half million. And the rehabilitation with widening was twelve and a half million. So just so, again, those, those numbers are available. I also want to point out, there was a little discussion about the railings. And the railings that we presented were open railings to provide viewshed. There are railings that are somewhat open that are concrete, like the existing railings. But the existing railings themselves are not an available option. They do not meet safety standards. So even if the bridge is rehabilitated, those rails have to be replaced with a crash-tested rail. Um, so, and there, there are some options with that. There's some aesthetic concrete rails, but they don't have as much of an open look as the rails that are on the existing bridge do. So that sort of classic Florida, you know, post and beam rail that we see on the bridge is, is not an option that's available for us going forward with either a new bridge or with the rehabilitation. So just wanted to sort of clarify those points. And I want to thank everybody for, for giving us some additional input on the aesthetics and those are certainly things that are helpful to the state.
Well, again, thank you for, uh, coming in, making this presentation. I know, Ms. Venables, did you have any, uh, thing else that you wanted to say?
No, thank you very much.
All right. With that, we'll go to our next, uh, item, which is our consent agenda. Uh, item five, uh, minutes, August sixth, regular session, August twelfth, budget work session, August twentieth, regular session, September third, twelve, seventeen, twenty, uh, seventeen, regular session. Uh, I'm sorry, Sept- September twelve, special session, September seventeenth, regular session, September twenty third, special session, public hearing, Sept- September twenty third, uh, special session. Statistic release of liens, seven is attorney fees for Asia Hubbard, for Astrass, Yakovon Metz, Dana, um, LLP invoice number four, three, three, eight, four, Thompson, Sizan, Desalas, and hearing LLP invoice number seven, one, five, five, seven. Special events, North Southwood Fitness Park Dog Park Grand Opening, Zombie Run, and Halloween Family Fun Day, City of Tarpon Springs on October nineteenth. Antique and treasure sale, uh, Chamber of Commerce, uh, November sixteenth. Greek food and wine, Stuxford Saint Nicholas Orthodox Cathedral. And that's, uh, November fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth. Uh, nine is increased file number one, three, zero, 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 nine, dash, C, dash, JJ, telephony, uh, equipment and services. Ten is renewed file number one, two, zero, one, two, two, dash, N, dash, JJ. Maintenance of public restrooms at sponge exchange. Are there items anyone would like to pull?
Uh, Commissioner Lawson? Yeah, I'd like to pull number seven.
Number seven. Okay, um, is that, uh, all of it, all of number seven, um, Fraser and, um, Thompson, Sizan?
Seven A.
Seven A? All right. Uh, then Cheryl, let her came the motion for the, uh, rest of the, um, consent item. Do you have approval?
Second.
Any public comments on these items?
Peter Lax, five, one, four, Ashland Avenue, everybody left. And number ten quietly slips by. When I see it, I'm going to keep bringing this up. Sponge exchange bathrooms, seventy-five hundred dollars to maintain a private corporation business's maintenance of their restrooms. From what I understand, they charge their tenants a CAM fee. That's common area maintenance. Part of that is to cover the restrooms and the maintenance and the supplies and such. The city spent, I don't know exactly, Mark, you could probably tell us, quote us, exactly how much we spent to build those nice bathrooms there on the west end of the dock. This is the second year we've given seventy-five hundred dollars to the PAPASs. And if everybody doesn't remember, there was an issue a couple of years ago because we were paying them without a contract. So over the years, we've been paying a five thousand a year, then there went to ten, now we're at seventy-five hundred. So if you add up all this money we've been paying the PAPASs to maintain the bathrooms, we could have already built another pair of bathrooms, but that's history. What I'm talking about now is going forward. Seventy-five hundred last year, seventy-five hundred this year, seventy-five hundred next year, seventy-five hundred the year after that. Keep flipping by in consent agendas and eventually you have enough money to expand or do something with the bathrooms down at the marina. You've got room to build and expand those bathrooms down there. So let's use the money properly and work on reinvesting that money into the city's debt. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Roll call?
Commissioner Banter?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrapini?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Uh, item number seven A, Commissioner Lawson?
Thank you. Um, on July nineteenth, two thousand and ten, uh, former city attorney, uh, Jim Yakovon, uh, wrote a memo, uh, to clarify the firm's fee agreement with the city. Uh, specifically, it was, uh, clarifying what was covered under the retainer and what was not. Um, on the second page of that memo, it points out that, uh, these changes will reduce perhaps significantly the fees which the city pays to the firm, which it has done, by the way. Uh, it goes on to say, "Development agreements and related services are now covered by the retainer." Um, if you look at the first two pages of, uh, of this agenda item, specifically the very first item, it actually mentions development agreement. Um, but then as you go on, really the first page and a half, I think, are all related to five oh one Walton. And I think they would probably all be considered, uh, a development agreement or related to a development agreement. So I wanted to point that out. I wasn't sure if those items should be covered under the retainer.
I'm, I'm vaguely aware of that, uh, of that memo, Commissioner, but I couldn't tell you that, uh- you that, uh, I mean, I'm intimately, I appreciate that. I'm sure it's in the office somewhere, but I'm not, I, I recall when it went out because we sort of discussed it as a firm, but I don't recall that, uh, you know, I had significant influence into it. It sounds to me, based on what you told me just a moment ago, that, that certainly should be backed down. I'm happy to do that. Um...
Let, let me add something to realize, we need to separate the real estate por- portion of this thing because the real estate is not covered. Um, the development agreement came up because of the discussion on nursing on where we may need an agreement set. Um, so if, the thing is looking on the real estate, which is the extra char- you know, the possible separating of, uh, you know, that is a different thing and a different coverage of, because a lot of this was just our simple, what we were doing to go to referendum to sell the property. Uh, then the development agreement component came into the thing and that's where I think we need to look and obviously with Mr. Metz and the real estate portion of that has always been the charge that is covered, but developmental portion of that, I think that's where we gotta get and look at and see which one is which.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to have a look at the invoice and determine which, uh, uh, among them are, you know, obviously the very first entry you see is certainly develop- is, you know, development agreement. Uh, that next phrase in the letter as I'm reading it now says, "Related services." So I'd like to see if, if related services, uh, you know, by entry are included there and then resubmit that portion of the invoice if that's okay with you folks.
Yeah, I, I would definitely appreciate that. Um, 'cause, 'cause I, you know, with the, the Lowe's project, for example, where we had development agreement, uh, I guess nothing would have gone under real estate because we didn't own that land. Um, here, we're in a different situation where we do own the land, so I do understand some of it would go into real estate. Uh, I see a lot of these billable items that, that may or may not be billable, that reference phone calls to, uh, attorneys, um, I, I presume involved with the project and I, I don't know, it seems to me like some of them might be related to a potential development agreement. Uh, the other comment I would make is I would like to ask, uh, that in the future, staff, uh, I'm not sure who, somebody from staff be involved with reviewing the bill to make sure, you know, if something specifically says development agreement, that that, that should be covered by retainer. Um, you know, I won't always be here to, to look at it. That should be, I, I think, a mechanism from, from somebody from staff to review, to, to filter what should or should not be covered from the retainer.
I, 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 that's all great and I will take a greater role in, uh, digesting the content of this memo, making sure that we understand what's retained or what's not.
And again, while I get together, we do review them, I review it and my understanding is, um, the research was done related to the, uh, again, the real estate part. We haven't even got to the point where they have applied for the devel- development agreement yet, so we're not even in those stages. We're, we were in the process of seeing where that all fit in with the real estate. So it's gonna be tough to get back and, again, that's something, uh, um, we need to go because actually the application to the start of the development process is not in yet. We're trying to prepare for how it affects the real estate transaction on it, so there's gonna be, we just need to talk back and forth on.
Yeah, I'd like to re- I appreciate that and I'd like to research the history of this project, find out exactly what, what the firm's been doing with, uh, Bob Metz and, uh, Brandon Huffman and, and just report back to you folks.
Can I make one additional comment? Um, not specifically related to, to this bill, but in general, um, I for one would like to ask that we try as much as possible to minimize, um, any, anything that's going to be billable related to this project because we still don't know for sure if the public will end up supporting the project. So I, it, it would be a shame if we end up spending thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars on a project that ultimately gets voted down at referendum. So that's, I don't know, that's just my thoughts at, at this point, that we wanna be careful how much money we spend going into this when, again, we, I don't think it's a done deal that it will automatically get passed at the referendum level.
Thank you. The, the other thing too is, uh, along with what the city manager said, uh, uh, is that we might look at, uh, how some of this is, is worded so that it's, uh, you know, if it's not development agreement, then it, it, it's worded a little bit better, not so that we can get around, you know, for the guys to get paid, because we, we'd love to have it under our, uh, uh, agreement with it, but I, but we wanna be careful, so. Uh, can we get a motion on approving, uh, seven A?
Before making a motion?
Before you want to defer that until, uh, and have them bring it back?
Do you wanna defer the whole thing or do you just wanna?
Because, uh, it's only a part of...
We approved everything but seven A.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, then, but, uh, I didn't know whether you wanted them to, to look at it first and bring that back, uh, how would you like for that to handle, be handled? You, you wanna?
You, you could do it either way. That's, that's the pleasure of the commission. You could approve, uh, item seven A minus, um, the item marked general on the first two pages, um, up, up to where in bold on page three where it says Charter Review Committee, or you could defer it for two weeks, I'm fine either way.
But I'd, I'd make a motion to, to approve, uh, the invoice other than, what did we say? Uh, the items marked general? Is that all I can say today?
Yeah.
Other than the items marked general on the, on the first two pages?
Second.
You got that, uh? All right. Uh, any public comments on this item? Roll call?
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tierpenny?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Uh, next we'll go to special consent agenda, item number eleven, request for appraisal Jefferson Bank building parking lot to the manager. Um, again, this is, the only thing I'm asking for with this item is to, uh, the request for the city to get an appraisal. Um, right now, I think the limit of me getting it would be two thousand. This appraisal has been a difference, so it could be anywhere from fifteen hundred to twen- I don't know what the cost is, so in haste of going over that and plus to have you just look at, uh, you know, what we've been talking about for six months. Basically, it started out with, uh, if you would know the property behind Jefferson's bank, um, that building was required to have, I believe, thirty-five or some odd spaces and they're pretty well delineated out at the back of the building. There are those sort of two extra lots in the back and the, the intent of the owners was to close that off, um, because of some liabilities concerned and they have been, we have been talking back and forth for six months about the possibility of the, the city acquiring that. Um, they provided some things, they've made sure that they have the parking that they need, um, and, and, uh, even made a preliminary offer. Um, obviously, the preliminary offer in my mind is way too high, but to even start the thing of looking at it, um, seeing what the uses are, um, obviously the uses for parking, especially in special events, anybody who knows the property is mostly barren right now during the day, but special events, it's completely full. Um, but not only looking at it for the city to keep it open as parking, but, um, Ms. Vincent's document that I enclosed, there's some possibilities for later on if we wanted to, um, the city would have control of how it's developed at a later time and, uh, Ms. Vincent tells the various ways if we ever wanna go away from the parking, that it's possibly, you know, sold to the developer in a situation where, again, we control, um, what is developed there in the future. But to even get to the bottom line of negotiating, uh, talking to Mr. Kuskudus, Mr. Cosgrove and coming to a figure where I'm comfortable with and, you know, they had told me they would be interested in the appraisal, um, before we start a negotiation, um, so the, the step to go and start talking, even bring something back to you, whether we consider, you know, buying the property or not buying it, would be to get an appraisal, see what that appraisal's worth and then kind of see where the negotiation process goes and, uh, and to talk to this commission about if they wish to purchase the property or not. Obviously, even with their offer, it's gonna be under the twenty-five, you know, two hundred fifty thousand dollars, so it would not have to go to referendum. And again, this is nothing about a decision to go and stuff, but for us to really sit down and get the fair figure where we think the city might take it, um, I need to get that appraisal, you know, somewhere in the fifteen hundred to, to twenty-five hundred area, um, you know, depending on contract and what they have to do with, uh, that parking lot area. So that's all I'm asking you to do, to do, and, uh, I believe Mr. Kuskudus is in the audience, you have any questions for him, uh, but to get the appraisal and then to sit down with them and talk about if there's a possible point of price that we both agree upon to bring to you to talk about.
Hey, um, Commissioner Tierpenny?
Thank you. Um, this is something that, uh, I've been in communication with the city manager about. I was kind of made aware of that there was an offering of this property and I think it was definitely prudent, um, for Ms. Vincent to put together this, this brief memorandum, um, detailing what the potentials of the property could be. Um, I certainly don't want the city to own it for a long period of time if we were able to make a deal, um, with Mr. Cosgrove and Mr. Kuskudus. Um, but I also think that, um, there's a benefit to the city being able to have quote-unquote "control" over the property and potentially, um, you know, work a deal with somebody to where some incentives may be offered, but the property actually gets developed versus what plagues parts of the town in the sense that people own property and don't ever do anything with it. Um, I certainly think the highest and best use for the property is not that parking lot. Um, so I'm, I'm more than willing to move along with this. I think it's, you know, probably a good idea. I mean, I don't think the city manager by charter is required to even ask us, uh, for an expenditure of this amount. I think within twenty-five thousand dollars, you could just do it. So I appreciate you, you bringing this, uh, before us, but I think it is, you know, potentially an opportunity to, to, for the city to temporarily own a piece of property, um, within the CRA, um, and could help, you know, potentially with, with, uh, Ms. Lemon's help and, and help of all of our staff, uh, recruit a, a, a good development together. I mean, if you look at some of the, um, some of the potential for this piece of property, I mean, it's really, uh, exciting if, if you look at it, if you look at the residential, retail, or even the mixed use components, that's really what I feel like we're trying to move forward with, um, across the board. Um, so, so I'm good, I'm, I'm good, uh, moving forward, seeing what the, uh, seeing what the appraisal comes back at and then just crossing the bridge when we get there, even see if we can get close to a number that everybody feels comfortable with and then, um, you know, moving forward with what the, the desire of the commission is if we even wanna strategically buy this in the short term. Thank you.
Commissioner Lawson and Commissioner Banther?
Thank you. Um, I have a, a different point of view, um, on this, uh, and, and I don't mean to be, to be negative with it, I, I just don't see the, the purpose in paying for the appraisal. I, and you can say that, you know, one thousand five hundred, two thousand dollars isn't a large amount of money, I, I would argue that it is. Um, but, and, and we would only, we would only pay for that appraisal if we were serious about buying the property. I don't think we should be biting off more than we can chew from a real estate standpoint. We're already in the process downtown of attempting to, um, to develop the Forbes property. I, I don't, I don't think we wanna get into the situation where we're buying and selling property. Uh, I, you know, i- it, it was something that was useful for us to do, obviously, we, we had the Forbes property, so there was a reason for us to move forward with it, but I don't think we should be looking for opportunities to, to buy and sell property at this point. Um, it, when you look at the list of the things, and I appreciate Ms. Vincent supplying this list, I agree that some of those would be very beneficial and I, I think it'd be fantastic, um, if the owner of the property wanted to, to, to sell it to somebody and try to develop it. I just don't know that the city, uh, needs to be involved with that process.
Commissioner Banther?
Thank you. Uh, I, I, I do support moving forward with the, with the appraisal. Um, I'd, I'd, I'd like to see what, what that comes in. I believe that is a very, um, it's a unique piece of property, but a property with a lo- a, 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 a lot of potential as, uh, um, is, uh, uh, is though, is outlined, uh, though, um, in the, in, in this memo, there's also a need for parking down, down, downtown area. I know it's been left open and they've been, you know, covering the liability for that and they can't continue to do that and I don't, I don't blame them for that. But I do wanna, um, kinda be cautious, as I think my colleagues are, that we don't, you know, um, collect the surplus of land in Tarpon Springs. And it doesn't sound like it's gonna be the case here, but, uh, I would like it to be if we did, and if it was appraised, we came to a deal, I would like it to be more of a short-term thing, um, unless the, unless the city and my colleagues thought we needed to own a parking lot. Um, just because of, um, also some slippery slope issues, there's other banks in town, there's other buildings in town that have parking lots that are used by the public during night hours. Those owners might not care and that's fine and that's very nice of them to provide that. But, um, I wanna move forward, but move, move forward, move, move forward cautiously, but I do appreciate, um, the owners approaching the city first about this and at least giving us first right of refusal and, uh, and not going elsewhere with it. Um, the element of control, not that I wanna control everything that gets built in this town, um, it does have its benefits, uh, so thank you.
Thank you. I'd say that, uh, one is that the city manager, uh, could have, uh, gotten the appraisal, but I'm glad that he didn't suffer because it, it still has to come back to this party to vote on any type of, uh, purchase of it. Um, I, I'm, I'm concerned about what's considered the highest and best use of it for us, you know, uh, so I'm interested in the appraisal because right now, when we look at Craig Park and what happens there, um, a, a lot of times, we don't have enough parking to support Craig Park or the Heritage, uh, museum that's there. So it would be good to have some, uh, parking, uh, we don't have enough parking as it relates to, uh, any of the, uh, boats that are at Craig Park, uh, right now. So, um, what might be the highest and best use, I don't want us to be, um, thinking in terms of that, um, so we'll have this dilemma as to what comes back, um, with any type of appraisal, but I, I don't have any problem in, um, supporting it for its information and concern in whether, uh, we can, uh, get this at a, uh, reasonable, um, price. I think that cost is, is a factor as it relates to whether, uh, the city should be purchasing this or not. So, um, with that, um, chair will indicate a motion, um...
Do you have approval?
Second.
Any public comments on this item?
Mike Kuskudus, six two three East Harpen Avenue. Uh, I'm sure you've even indicated that, uh, I am a principal owner in that property. Um, unfortunately, and, and it was, it was, uh, uh, out of properly explained, is, you know, our liability carrier has, has told us that there's certain liabilities of allowing people to park there. You know, during the day, it, it, the, the lot doesn't get as much use as it can, but special events, anytime there's something at Craig Park, the lot fills up. You know, my partner manages the property. I can't tell you how many times he's had to go pick up diapers, cans, bottles, breaking this, broken that. And, and not only, you know, and that's, you know, one of the small problems that we have, you know, uh, a truck spent the night over there, we had to have it towed away, uh, for, actually for three days. And, and what we're looking at is cooperation with the city. Um, I know it's important for the downtown merchants to have, uh, parking for their events and, and so that's why we reached out to the city rather than, uh, our, our alternative was to actually close the parking lot. And that's not something we wanted to do because it could affect the downtown merchants and it could affect special events in this, in the city. So I appreciate y'all, uh, taking this step and moving forward and, uh, you know, I'm curious to see what the appraisal might bring. Thank you.
Peter Lax, five oh four Ashland Avenue, um, I mean, it's a no-brainer, if you're thinking about buying something, you gotta get an appraisal on it, so that's my comment on this particular issue. Uh, I did wanna take a moment to, uh, let this board know and maybe the public with regards to the issue about the bridge in the county meeting. Uh, the county has meetings at three o'clock and at six thirty. And they didn't clarify which one they were talking about. I went out to ask them. Now, Ms. Venables said they were told to be there at two. Now, I know the way the county does, they do their public hearings at six thirty and I don't know if this particular presentation would be considered a public hearing to the county, that it would be in the evening meeting, but most people here, hearing the twenty-second in the county are familiar with evening meetings. And I asked Ms. Venables and she's, just to clarify that for public, she works for that, that UBS or URS company. She's the private people and the other people were the county people. So they're gonna try to let y'all know, to let us know if it's gonna be the afternoon meeting or the night meeting. But from what she was told at the current time, they were told to be there at two o'clock, which indicates the afternoon meeting, which most people would not be assuming. So if we can get a clarification on that, I know we have a, another board meeting, I guess the fifteenth, before their twenty-second, where maybe we can relay that out. And, uh, as far as the comments about communication, uh, I learned about it because, you know, I go online to our website. about communication, I learned about it, because, you know, I go online to our website and check our agenda, and we're going to get an update. So, I appreciate our board putting our agendas up, at least on Fridays ahead of time, so we can at least see what's coming up on our boards. Thank you.
Dean Cosgrove, five-hundred North Highland Avenue. I'm one of the principal owners of the Jefferson Bank Building, and I just wanted to take two minutes of your time. As Mr. Kaskudis stated, I manage the property on there, probably an average of sixty hours a week. And unfortunately, we've really reached out to the community to let them park there as much as we can. We've, every event, from the Christmas pageant to the Craig Park events that are going on down there, more frequently, which is great, we've been very involved in trying to get special, for instance, during the art show, we give this parking lot to the Boy Scouts. The Boy Scouts raised about four or five thousand dollars during that event. One of their biggest fundraisers of the year, or their biggest fundraiser of the year. We give it to another group during a Tiffany to go ahead and do fundraising. We're not there to profit from a parking lot. However, we have an additional forty-five to fifty spaces. It is the largest parking lot in the intermediate sector of Tarpon Springs, before you go down to the Sponge Docks. The maintenance alone on that parking lot for us is probably somewhere around thirty-eight hundred dollars a year, and that's just us doing the maintenance. We resurface it every three years, which costs us about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars to do that. Parking bumpers are broken pretty much every other, you know, week. I'm replacing parking bumpers and also doing trash maintenance. But the biggest issue for us is the liability factor. During the Christmas pageant, we had actually someone who slipped and fell in that parking lot. We had a hundred and thirty-seven cars in that parking lot during the pageant. Wonderful turnout. We didn't want anyone towed. We have tow-away signs there just for, again, our protection. We're reaching out to the city just to let them know that we are open, just like other banks. We try to keep that parking lot open. But for special events, we sometimes have a situation, because it is sort of buried in the back, that there's an overuse. And at this point, our insurance liability carrier told us that we can no longer let this parking lot be an open public forum. We pay an additional eighteen hundred dollars a year for that liability. Now, as of two thousand fourteen coming forward, they will not insure us for that. Our hands are sort of tied. So, that's why we reached out to the city first. And I just want to thank you guys for listening to us. We're, you know, there are other uses for that property without a doubt. You know, Mike and I have both been in the real estate business a lot of years, so we're aware of that. But the city, I think, would really benefit from, even a parking garage down the road, which I know may be something that, because Lemon and Court are such big streets. The boats especially. Every weekend, I have between five and seven trailers in my lot from boat parking. And that's fine, as long as everything's put away and it's maintained properly. Thanks again.
Any other public comments, roll call?
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner T. Arpani?
Yeah.
Commissioner Larson?
No.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Will I go to item number twelve, increase RFP number zero-nine-zero-one-zero-zero dash P, job order contracting?
This is the job contracting where we get assistance in projects, most of which are of the minor or medium nature. Unfortunately, we have a project where we're needing a lot of help on with our big sewer breakage in issue down the street, which is going to consume a lot of money. So, the reason why you see the increases so much is to cover those costs of all the systems that are going in there, plus, you know, to have available, again, this is when we need assistance, some assistance to do some projects that we are doing, for the most part, ourselves, which in itself saves money, but we need some technical assistance for whatever reason that we have, not capabilities of staff to do. It's a money saver, and plus the availability of how somebody raises, mobilize without going out and, you know, doing the process. This is a universal bid, and if we have an emergency happen, we can mobilize and get it through for almost anything, from a minor light instruction to a big, major break. So, this is something that we just did several years ago. It's been successful, saved us money and time on getting projects and getting things that need to be fixed, fixed in a timely manner for our citizens. So, I encourage you to approve this.
Any comments, questions for the city manager?
Is there? And on that, so far, what does Stafford Avenue, live oak issue, that costs us?
I'll probably know better than next me. I've told Mr. Function, who is out of town, and he should have a better idea. It's not going to be good news, but he should have some better ideas of how bad the news is, and I'm scheduled to put him on an update from the next meeting, let you where we are and where the cost that we are looking at.
My neighbors were starting to obviously ask us, because we looked at it all day. Is there any timeframe?
Hopefully, I'll have that for you next meeting also. We'll be a little further along to make, again, we're, you know, we're finding things. We want to make a complete fix on this we don't want to fix, and then have another. So, we are trying to make sure, no matter how painful it is, to get in, do everything that needs to be done, and not have another inconvenience in four to six months, or...
But I assume it's not going to be ready for the whole Halloween thing on the nineteenth, or whatever?
I doubt it seriously, but we've already got a contingency plan, how we're going to get people there and do it. We've got that. We've got that plan together to still make it a...
Well, I know that, I mean, they do work around the clock. All right, at night, traction, near midnight, they're out there working. So, it is, you know, I know it's a busy project. Thank you.
Shall I entertain a motion?
Motion, motion to approve?
Second.
Any other public comments on this item? Roll call?
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner T. Arpani? Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Ordnance of Resolution, item number thirteen, has been deferred by the applicant until October fifteenth meeting. We go to item number fourteen. Order twenty thirteen dash twenty-three, Amending the Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, and CRA and Sponge Dock Smart Code to provide for dogs and public food service establishments. First reading.
Ordnance twenty thirteen dash twenty-three, An Ordnance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, Amending Appendix A of the City of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances, Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, Article Four, Creating Section Seventy-four-point-zero-zero Dogs in Public Food Service Establishments, and Amending Appendix B of the City of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances, Community Redevelopment Area and Sponge Dock Smart Code, by amending Chapter One, General Instructions, Providing for Findings, Providing for Separability, and Providing an Effective Date. That's the first reading of Ordnance twenty thirteen dash twenty-three by title only. The ordinance is published on September one, two thousand thirteen, in Santa Bay Times. If approved, it will have a second reading on October fifteen, two thousand thirteen, and published again on October five, two thousand thirteen.
Commissioner?
Uh, thank you. This is ordinance two thousand thirteen dash twenty-three, adopting into the land development code as well as the smart code, an ordinance to allow food service establishments to have dog dining, if they have open areas in their restaurants. This ordinance largely mirrors what's been done in the ten other municipalities, which largely mirror exactly the state legislature, the state requirements that are set out for permitting these types of establishments. The one thing that we have added in that's somewhat specific to, for our ordinance, is not allowing sidewalk cafes on public sidewalks, so not be available to pay attention to dogs. That's just a liability type of issue that we thought was wise to include in the ordinance. The Planning and Zoning Board reviewed this at their September sixteenth meeting, and there was a few issues that were discussed. Should there be a limit on the size of dogs? That really, nothing was really proposed. It was just a question of the cost of permit, of the permit, which has yet to be determined. There was some discussion about the requirement for employees to wash their hands, and simply moving from the dog dining area to another area of the restaurant. That is somewhat more restrictive than the state code requires, but it is, and this, our code was largely mirrored after Dunedin's, and it is in theirs. And so, and then there was a clarification on the second whereas clause that would require a permit. After reviewing the Planning and Zoning Board comments, we did just two changes to the base ordinance to be made that are included in the ordinance tonight. The second whereas clause has been amended, that's suggested to include the requirement for a permit, just for clarification. And then, subparagraph D-one has been amended to provide for hand sanitation stations for workers entering and exiting the dog dining area, just in case. I mean, if you don't necessarily have a washroom out there, then that's hard to comply with. So, we're trying to provide, make that as easy as possible to comply with. The Planning and Zoning Board did recommend approval of it. There was one dissenting vote, and he just fundamentally disagrees with this from a sanitation and cleanliness, you know, health professional. So, I can understand his concerns. The staff recommendation is to approve this. I'd be happy to entertain any suggestions or comments or recommended changes between now and second reading. Thank you.
Is there any signage that talks about, you know, this is a dog-friendly establishment or whatever? That's for the people that want to bring their dogs and others that don't want to eat with dogs?
Yes. They will, there are requirements in the ordinance, and they're actually in the state legislation as well, that the establishment has to be posted, visible close to the patrons and the employees, that is a dog-friendly establishment, so that everyone's aware of this. So, yes, there are definite signage posting requirements for, that each restaurant has to abide by.
Commissioner Banther and Commissioner Larson?
Thank you, and I appreciate, though I appreciate Planning and Zoning reviewing this, and I'm glad that we're taking extra steps for sanitization and washing hands. And also, my, my, have already been there by no Commissioner Larson brought up the signage issue when we discussed it, and glad that, that is in there for those that don't wish to, you know, restaurant that has doggy dining. And when I brought this forward, wasn't so much, and that, though, as the paper quoted, to put that I want dogs in the outside restaurants. It's a tool for economic development for our restaurant owners, that surrounding communities have adopted, and it, though it's worked out well, and as you say in here, they have not experienced any particular issues or problems with that. And, you know, and I'm glad that we're taking the extra step above and beyond with the sanitization and the signage. So, thank you.
Commissioner Larson?
Thank you. So, we had you bring up a chicken ordinance, now you're bringing doggy dining. Do you wonder what we're bringing you next?
Bees, pigs, goats?
Don't tempt us. I know, I appreciate you bringing this back to us. I do have some questions and comments. The first thing I want to say, and I said this at the last time we discussed this, I think this is good to give the restaurant owners the power to make that decision, to give them the right to make that decision. I also think it's going to be very good for some restaurant owners to say no. And I just want to point that out, that there are some people in the community that don't want dogs, you know, anywhere near their dining experience. So, I think it's good if we can, you know, move in the direction of giving restaurant owners that power of choice, so that if this is something they want to do, they can do it, and we've got, you know, certain guidelines in place. But again, I don't think every restaurant should be participating. But I did have some questions I wanted to ask. On page, oh, first of all, it says attachment with amendments highlighted in yellow. I just wanted to point out that I didn't have any yellow on mine.
Oh, I apologize. I don't do the printouts for the board personally, but they were in the original report.
There is, alright. We've got the amendments. There is not yellow.
Exactly.
On page two at the bottom, number one talks about employee, employees shall wash their hands promptly after touching, petting, or otherwise handling any dog, and it goes on from there. And then, number two says that employees are, number two on the next page, on page three, says employees are prohibited from touching, petting, or otherwise handling any dog. I just, I was wondering if those two statements contradict each other. I noticed that number two does say, while serving or carrying food or beverages. I'm not sure, I don't know. I wasn't sure what situation a server would be out there petting a dog, but not, I don't know. I was just wondering if there was a contradiction there.
You know, they may just be passing through the area and see a dog that they just have to put their hands on. I don't know. That's, it's a, again, it's more, it's like some of these things are maybe overly precautionary, but we're trying to cover all the bases. So, maybe it's not their normal area to serve, but they're, or at the busboy out there cleaning or something. So, we're just trying to cover all the bases.
We can err on the side of washing hands. So, I don't have a problem with it. I just wanted to see if there's any conflict there. Is it worthwhile for us to designate the size of the dog? Is that something other municipalities have done?
Not to my knowledge. I can investigate that between first and second reading a little bit more. To me, that's just kind of a slippery slope. You can have...
No, and the problem is, who is going to be enforcement of measuring, or weighing, or doing that on the thing? It would just be impossible. Important, you don't like putting in something enforceability that's very difficult, not impossible, because a patron says, you got a fifty-pound limit, and I know that dog's sixty-two pounds. What, I don't think Chief Coach is going to issue the scales to go out there and put the dog on the scales.
And really...
I had no problem with it.
But really, I think...
I understand.
Behavior is probably even more important. I might be much more comfortable around a well-behaved dog than, you know, a really happy, you know...
And another related question, I guess a lot of this is going to come down to the restaurants kind of policing their own customers to some extent. But I was wondering if we should, and then maybe the answer is going to be the same, that we don't want to get involved in this, but should we look at the length of the leash? We talked about how the dog needs to be on a leash, but if they're on a fifteen-foot leash, they could very easily be in the lap of a patron at the next table. I don't know. I just was wondering if that's something that we should explore, or if maybe we don't want to get involved with that.
That's another one I would say would be enforceability of a restaurant to do, instead of a thing for us to enforce.
And I think the key is that, and shall keep their dogs under reasonable control. So, if you don't have your dog under control, then you should be asked to leave, and sometimes a fifteen-foot leash.
Yeah, I think a lot of this will come down to the restaurants handling it. And then, the other question I had, on page three, number seven, it says, employees shall clean and sanitize all table and chair surfaces with an approved product between seating of patrons. I just, I didn't know if there was some definition somewhere. What is an approved product? What do we mean by that?
I believe those are the ones that are in the, that's in the regulatory thing of restaurants to do. Who is the one who administrates the restaurants?
Hotel, restaurant management.
And we took the code from, a lot of this is out of the code, code that they have to establish with them. So, it's the ones at the restaurant, the regulatory...
Do we reference that, or should we reference that in some way? Because, I mean, this is going to be our ordinance, and we're talking about approved products, but there's no definitions of approved products here.
Yeah, the state code doesn't indicate what an approved product is either. Let me look at that a little more between now and, maybe it should just say, you know, at least be specific to a sanitation product or something. We can look at that.
Fine. I don't want to be too sticky on this. I just want to, you know, if it's going to be an ordinance that we're approving, I just want to make sure it all, you know, makes sense. Thank you.
Commissioner T. Arpani?
Thank you. I think it's a, you know, good idea to bring it forward. I mean, I definitely believe in it in terms of redevelopment and trying to follow the trends. But I think the whole component to it of it being palatable, if it's a free choice thing for the restaurants, I mean, do they have to adhere to the resolution a hundred percent? But you don't want to have dogs in your restaurant, you don't have to have them. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Shall I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any public comments on this item?
Mike Kaskudis, six-two-three East Harpen Avenue. I am a dog lover. I have a nice labradoodle. And, you know, there are times I take the dog to Dunedin, because in downtown Dunedin, they have cafes, and you could bring your dog. And there's many times, I see all kinds of dogs out there, people enjoying the evening with their pet. And the restaurants do control how that is managed, because if you have a dog that's not well behaved, that affects the other patrons and the restaurant owners. You know, rather than it turn away business, we'll say something to that pet owner. But I encourage this commission, when it does come to final approval, to move forward with it, because, you know, if you are a dog owner, a dog lover, sometimes it's nice to take your pet with you out for a nice evening. And I will suggest this to you, that I've gone to restaurants, and I sat next to people whose sanitation was a lot less than my dog. So, that being said, please consider this. Thank you.
I'm not sure who you were talking about there. Before I called for the vote, I'd say that, you know, I am a dog lover. I don't like to eat with dogs, but I do love dogs. I, I don't like to eat with dogs, but I, I do love dogs, and, um, while this is something that I, I don't think is the best, uh, it's up to every restaurant that want to have dogs, um, dine at their restaurant, and everybody else has to make the decision whether they want to utilize their restaurant or not, so, um, it's something that the business owners need to consider. Um, so with that, vote called.
Commissioner Baffert?
Yeah.
Commissioner Serpini?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Mayor R.C.
Yes. Um, we go to our next item, which is, uh, let's see, uh, resolution, item number fifteen, resolution twenty thirteen forty-eight, application thirteen fifty-two, A Place For Pups, conditional use application to allow overnight boarding of animals at three nine nine three zero U.S. Highway nineteen north, and this is quays adjudicial.
Resolution twenty thirteen dash forty-eight, a resolution of the city of Tarpin Springs, Florida, approving conditional use application number thirteen dash five seven for overnight boarding of dogs at three nine nine three zero U.S. Highway nineteen, A Place For Pups, providing for findings, providing for conditions, and providing for an effective date. This is a quays adjudicial proceeding. Where the commission acts in a quays adjudicial rather than a legislative capacity, at such a hearing, it is not the commission's function to make law, or rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quays adjudicial hearing, the commission is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing, and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the codes of ordinances, in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The commission may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the codes, then the commission is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the code, then the commission is required by law to find against the applicant. There is an established procedure which will be followed at this quays adjudicial hearing. All witnesses must give their testimony on their oath. All persons testifying at this hearing must give their name and address for the record. All testimony and questioning at this hearing must address matters that are relevant and material to the issues under consideration. The city staff will present its testimony and evidence first, the applicant will then have an opportunity to cross examine the city staff. The applicant will then present its testimony to witnesses, the city staff will have an opportunity to cross examine the applicant's witnesses. Members of the public opposing the application will then be given an opportunity to present testimony. After all members of the public speaking in opposition to the application have concluded, members of the public in support of the application will have an opportunity to present testimony. Each member of the public is limited to four minutes of testimony. The applicant will then have an opportunity to make a closing argument or summary, after which city staff will be given an opportunity to make a closing argument or summary. Following this, the commission will consider the matter, and commissioners may ask questions of witnesses at this point in the proceedings. A motion will be made, and a vote will be taken. At this juncture, I'd ask for the mayor and commission to disclose any ex parte communications on this application. Saying none, I'd ask for anyone who intends to give testimony tonight to please stand and be sworn. Ask you to raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Ms. Benson.
Thank you, this is application thirteen dash fifty-seven, A Place For Pups, conditional use for overnight boarding. Um, this is, uh, an existing site, the property location is thirty-nine nine thirty U.S. Highway nineteen north, and is an existing site of a daytime boarding facility for, for dogs. Um, several years ago, we amended the codes of ordinances to allow for, potential for overnight boarding, and established a set of criteria, uh, review criteria, to allow that, uh, in the highway business district. The, under the standards for review for this, uh, for, for the overnight boarding, I'll, I'll go through, through these, there's several of them. Um, the, uh, the application, overnight boarding shall be limited to domestic pets, the applicant does, uh, only provide overnight boarding of dogs. Uh, number two, the minimum setback committed residentially zoned or utilized property for buildings shall be one hundred feet, and this really is the crux of, of, I, I think the discussion for tonight. The, uh, as proposed, they, they simply cannot meet the minimum setback requirement, no matter how you interpret the, the minimum one hundred foot distance, whether it's from the area that's proposed for the actual boarding, or that, you know, where the actual boarding would take place, or the closest point of the building. Um, at the closest point is twenty-eight feet from the residentially zoned property, and if farther, it's eighty-nine feet, and it is measured from the building to the property line. So, from, uh, from the staff review, they do not comply with that particular standard in the list of conditions that they, that they must comply with. Uh, the applicant will not have any outdoor runs, so there's no issue with that. Um, the applicant has not demonstrated any odor or pest control mechanisms, they did testify during the planning and zoning board that they do have the ability to pressure wash the inside of the area to keep it clean as necessary. Um, uh, the applicant's exercise area is located inside the building, there is a, an outdoor area that's used only during the daylight hours, from seven AM to seven PM, that was part of the original conditional use for the, for the daytime boarding. Uh, there's a requir- there's a requirement for soundproofing, shall be required for all boarding facilities. Um, the applicant did add, has added soundproofing materials to the interior of the building, and there are photographs of that. Waste control is provided by waste management. Uh, the applicant does also currently comply with the air handling system for distance action, air control. Uh, if, if it does, if it is approved, the applicant will have a veterinarian on call, they do meet the minimum one hundred and twenty-five square feet of space per animal, and if the application is approved, the applicant has testified that they will use an ADT monitoring system during the overnight hours, so it will be an unmanned, uh, overnight, but they will have a monitoring system. Uh, the staff recommendation, based on the review criteria, and largely on the distance separation requirements, is to deny the application. Um, it's, there's no variance procedures for that, and I, you know, I'll, I'll leave up to the boards how they want to address this at that point in time during the discussion, but because of the distance separation requirements, the staff recommendation is to deny the application. The planning and zoning board reviewed on September sixteenth, they also recommended denial by a five oh vote. Uh, there were, in addition to the distance requirements, there was concerns about the lack of onsite overnight monitoring, um, additional soundproofing, and there was, uh, two residents of the Mobile Home Park who did speak in opposition to the proposed overnight boarding. There was also one client of the daytime boarding operation who spoke in support. And, uh, with that, I will stop and answer any questions during the public hearing process at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Does the applicant have any cross examination for city staff? Ma'am, do you have any?
No.
Okay. It's time for you to make your presentation, if you'd like to address the commission, please.
Um, my name is Kathy Weeks, three nine nine three zero U.S. Highway nineteen north, Tarpin Springs. I've owned A Place For Pups Doggy Daycare since July two thousand and ten. During that time, we have cared for large and small dogs in the community. I employ six people, plus myself, and most of my employees have attended the Tarpin Springs High School Veterinary Science Academy. Several are also going to college to further their education in veterinary science. We have a good reputation, and many new clients walk in and tell me that we come highly recommended. However, with the current economic conditions, we struggle to make ends meet. We must use every resource available to improve the bottom line and remain a viable business here in Tarpin Springs. With that in mind, we are seeking to make better use of an area of our building that is underused. There are twelve secure kennels in the very back of our building, and it would be the perfect spot for overnight boarding of dogs. We have to turn a good amount of business away from potential clients who only need occasional boarding of their pets. We propose to use these indoor kennels at night, and only use the outdoor yard area for potty breaks during the hours that we are currently permitted to use it. Dogs would be fed and housed indoors, under air conditioning. The landlord provides monthly pest control, and we have an indoor pressure washing system in place to address any odor or sanitary concerns. Unfortunately, the building that I leased was very well outfitted by a previous owner for housing dogs, but the kennel area is eighty-nine feet from the perimeter fence at Stonehedge on the hill, Mobile Home Park. We want to be good neighbors, and I am willing to do reasonable things to minimize problems from house dogs. I ask that we be permitted to, to offer this service in Tarpin Springs.
Ms. Benson, do you have any questions from Ms. Weeks? Alright. At this time, we'll take any members of the public in opposition to the application. Any members of the public who would like to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward, state your name, you have four minutes, please. Thank you.
Sir, before you speak, I'm going to have you stand, be sworn in, please, okay? Could I ask you to raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Absolutely.
I thank you, sir. Please state your name and address. For the record, you have four minutes.
My name is John Thompson, live at thirty-nine eight twenty U.S. nineteen north in Stonehedge Mobile Park. And we live an alley width away, which I don't know what it is, twenty-five feet perhaps, and with an alleyway, but that's where we are, the second home. And every time there's some going on, you, now when the weather's going to cool down, we open windows, you can't open the door, you can't slam the door, they bark, and they fight. The dog is called A Place For Pups, there is no pups in that place, it's dogs. And outside, they got a tennis thirty-three by forty-two feet, and that's the only space they got. And for ten years or better, the dogs have been doing their duty, never clean it, never do nothing. There's two places in the backyard for bags, plastic bags, if they do number two, they pick that up. Now they finally got themselves a dumpster, they throw it in the dumpster, but if they don't shut the door, then the birds come the next day. So, we have problems there. And like I say, all we do is hear barking, and now pretty soon we're going to be open, every time we pass, or shut the door, talk to somebody, they're barking, and barking, and barking. And one question I have, this happened two years ago or stuff, and the commissioner at that time demanded that they put up an eight foot fence all the way around the park to baffle the sound. There's maybe three pieces of, maybe eight foot total, of eight foot, otherwise it's wide open, and we still hear from barking. Thanks for listening.
Please, if you'd raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, please state your name and address.
My name is Doris Thompson, I live at thirty-nine eight twenty U.S. nineteen north, right across the fence from the dog lovers. There are big dogs in that place, not only pups, and when there's six and seven dogs outside at one time, and they fight, you do hear them. We are very, very close. They planted weeds along the fence, I have pictures to show you if you'd like to see them. They don't take care of the place where the dogs go outside. We were here for the zoning board meeting, and the young lady told the board that there will be no adult there at night. She was asked what happens when the dogs have to do their duty. She said they do their duty right where they are. Nobody's there to pick it up and clean it up till the next day. Would you want your dog in vet? And not only that, she said, a vet is on call. Who's going to call the vet if something happens to one of the dogs? I mean, it's stupid for her to say such a thing. What if there's a fire? Who's going to call the fire department? You know, it, it's impossible. We were there first, if she wants this place for her dogs, go out in the country. She's got such a little bitty place in the back for those dogs to run, and it's full of chairs, and wagons, and junk. There's hardly any place at all for those poor dogs to run. It's just, we feel it's time that maybe, uh, the senior citizens are taught a little bit, and treated a little bit better in that area, instead of letting those other people have all the benefits. We're entitled to some, which we'd like that to happen if we could. Thank you. If you're interested in seeing the pictures, I'll gladly-
Ma'am, that's up to you. If you'd like to submit them in, if you'd like to submit them to the board, you can do that, it's up to, it's your decision.
I don't need a vet, so.
Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak in opposition to the application? Saying none, other members of the public who would like to speak in support of this application?
Mike to student six two three, East Tarpin Avenue.
Mr. Kuskus, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you. Were you sworn? I don't, thank you very much.
Um, I actually take my, my dog to, to, uh, A Place For Pups, um, and they, they do a very good job at what they do. Um, I actually had represented the prior owner before with regard to a, uh, an application for this, uh, particular, uh, issue. And, you know, from my understanding and listening to Renee, the crux is eleven feet. Uh, currently, the property is being used, uh, outside, and that's permitted, and, and that, all the arguments I've heard, that doesn't change. The question is, eleven feet, allowing the, the dogs to remain, uh, inside during nighttime hours, not outside during nighttime hours, but inside during nighttime hours with acoustical, um, um, protection. Um, with regard to not having, uh, uh, an overnight onsite, it probably would be very cost prohibitive. I don't know of any kennel, and I take my dog to the kennel, when I can't, because I can't take it there for overnight, my dog goes there during the daytime, but I have to take my business outside the city limits for any overnight, uh, uh, stay that I, I may go out of town, I need to have my dog placed. Um, I would imagine that any type of closed circuit camera that could be monitored at home could probably address that issue. I don't know if that would be a condition, or, or I think that could be a condition that would address that issue. Um, I'm in support of, uh, of the application, but one of the things that really struck me sitting up there, because I wasn't here for this matter, was when I brought this matter before the board, and there were several members of the, of that community who had spoken opposition, half of them actually own dogs. And they, and one of them, I remember making the comment, yeah, I can't stand when my dog barks. I don't want your dog to bark, but, you know, because mine drives me nuts when she barks. Every time somebody, every time somebody walked by the neighborhood, my dog would go out the window and start barking. That was one of the comments from one of the residents. But it's okay for residents to have their, their dogs barking, and again, this is not a, an outside, a request for outside, uh, uh, kennel, it's an inside kennel, with proper sound, sound, uh, prevention. So, I don't think eleven feet, and then I think as Renee said, there really is no avenue to request a variance. If there would be, then I would imagine there would be an application for a variance. But since this is the only recourse, from my understanding, is I guess it's up to this commission to determine whether eleven feet is going to make that much of a difference in, in a housed environment that is soundproofed. Thank you.
Ms. Weeks, if you'd like to make a closing statement or summary, now's the time.
Um, the, part of the issue that the, the residents of Stonehedge have brought up is that we planted weeds, and we don't maintain them. Um, what their pictures show are across the, the little service road, and weeds that the landlord has failed to maintain that were growing. I called, when they brought the issue- I called, when they brought the issue up to me, I called the landlord, and he sent someone out, and they cleaned that up. Um, I don't think it's my responsibility to go across the street and clean the landlord's property. Um, the dogs, being the nature of the beast, dogs are going to bark. Uh, I do my best to keep them from barking, um, when I take them outside, and again, they would not be, uh, going outside at night. Uh, someone at the zoning, uh, hearing asked me if I've ever done a hea-, you know, a, a sound test. And just before I came here, I had a couple dogs in the back that were actively barking before they went home. And I took a sound meter, and I couldn't get a reading, and I was parked on the service road on my side of the Stonehedge fence, and they were, they were back in the kennel areas, and they were barking. But with the road noise, and the, the wind, the birds, I couldn't get a reading on the barking dogs. I could barely hear them, but there was no reading on the, on the meter.
Thank you. Ms. Vincent?
Uh, I just wanted to add, um, I have provided a resolution, if the board goes forward with picking up, you know, conditions of approval, that would be a requirement. Um, I'm not sure where the board's going with this tonight. Um, also, I did want to just state, I, I did go by the property myself today, and I drove in back around on the service road, and I, uh, shut off my engine, got out of the car, and, and yes, you can hear, I, there were dogs actively barking, they were inside the facility, I don't know where they were inside the facility, but I could hear a dog's barking. Was it obnoxiously loud, I, you know, and could you have heard it over at the Mobile Home Park? I can't state definitively whether or not, but I can state that standing there at the service drive outside the building, I could hear dogs barking. I'm just putting that into the record, um, if it means anything to you, so.
Uh, thank you. Uh, while, uh, for me, I can appreciate that, you know, it's, it's a hard time, and all businesses need their opportunities. Um, I, I, I personally can't support us going against what's the requirement is for, is one hundred feet, uh, no matter how close it is, uh, that would deny, um, residents, uh, what I consider is quality of life. Uh, so for me, it's just a matter of not meeting the requirement, um, of one hundred feet, you know, whether it's just twenty-eight, whether it's eighty-nine. Either, neither one would meet those requirements, and as was mentioned, there is no other recourse that's available, but to me, for us, is to follow the rules that we've established. So, uh, with that, uh, I'll go to commission comments, it's was Commissioner Tarpani, and-
Thank you.
Um, Ms. Vincent, I have a question for you. I'm a little, I don't know if confused is the word, but the site, the site plan, um, what exactly are we talking about here? Are we talking about the, uh, applicant wanting to, if, if you look at the, I don't know what page it is, but it says site layout plan, and it says proposed overnight kennel area. That's proposed to be built?
No, it's an existing little appendix of the building there. It's not very large.
So it's existing?
Yes, sir.
So if it's existing, and there's already, the building's already there, what's the contention? That the-
It still doesn't meet the setback requirement for, for overnight boarding from residentially zoned property.
Okay. Um, okay, so that, so from that proposed new kennel area, that to the, to the property line is eighty-nine feet?
Yes, sir.
And the twenty-eight feet is the corner?
Yes, sir.
Where there are, where there already is overnight boarding?
No, there's no overnight boarding, it's, that's just part of their daytime boarding facility.
Gotcha. Um, the gentleman who spoke, mentioned, who lives in Stonehedge, mentioned, uh, when, when the application came before the board, X number of years ago, that the board said something about an eight-foot fence. Do you have any recollection of that?
There, yes, there, there is a, and there's an eight-foot fence that's there, uh, whether or not that was miscommunication or mis-, you know, understanding about if it has to go, there's a very narrow, if I can find an exam, um, on the picture of it. There's a narrow fenced area along the side of the building that's parallel, if you will, to the Mobile Home Park, that's literally only about this wide, that goes to an access door. And then farther, beyond that area where the actual, like, play area or area where they walk the dogs, as soon as you get beyond the, it, to the building where it opens up, and it's not just this little narrow strip like this, uh, that whole area is, has the, excuse me, that requires eight-foot fencing. So, that area along the building, and I don't know how actively that's used for their, for the purposes of, um, the play area, or the, where they're walking, it appears it's just a, an access area out of the building back to the play area. That area is not fenced, and I would have to go back and go through the notes and see what, whether or not, you know, that should be fenced, but I'm telling you, it's narrow, and, you know, so an eight-foot fence up there, maybe, you know, I don't know how-
A couple of years ago, you probably have some recollection of it. What, what are the waste requirements for a facility like this? Do we have any?
Our, there's specific, what's specifically stated in the staff report, let me go back and look at that. Uh, we required that if you have, let's see, if you have outdoor runs, they would have to have drains connected to an approved sanitary facility, which, that which they do not have outdoor runs. And we required that waste control, the boarding facilities must contain waste control systems that are connected to an approved sanitary facility. So they do have waste drains inside the, uh, where the kennels would be, such that, you know, well, functionally, what they would do would be probably to bag the waste and, you know, go to the dumpster, and then all the liquids would be hosed down through the sanitary system. So, uh, from our perspective for that, they do comply.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Sebastian?
Yes, uh, is there any precedent, I don't know, I often ask this in this kind of situations, where we've granted a, a, um, though, though an ordinance or variance? I know, maybe not one that's a pet shop, whatever, but some, some, in a situation where there's been, the only, the only, the only issue is the setback, and we, and we've granted that?
No, typically, what we would, the, the way our variance ordinance is laid out, you know, the, the var-, you know, it specifically states that you can get a variance to zoning dimensional criteria or other criteria where specifically authorized. And this is not a specifically authorized, it's not in Article Two of the zoning section, so it's not specifically authorized for a variance. Um, I'll lean on the city attorney here, but I, I mean, I think if you want to find a way to waiver this, then we would need to revisit the code, that, that would be my opinion. Otherwise, I think you're pretty much just butchering the code.
I would, well, I, I agree, I agree. Though I don't know how you term butchering. You're certainly deviating, you're certainly deviating from an authorizing a variance that couldn't otherwise be acquired, the way that your code is currently written.
An answer, direct answer to your question, no, I can't remember simply waiving it.
So, dogs currently stay in this exact spot during the daytime, and that's fine.
I, I don't know if she is-
Well, could they illegally?
Yes, they could for, for daytime boarding.
But the only, the only issue is at night, there's a larger setback than just day boarding.
Correct. And, and typically, because they're unmanned, there, there is nobody there to control the dogs, um, you know, it's, it's, it's like the mayor said, we deal with it really as a quality of life type of issue for this surrounding property. Typically, these are out in the country or out in industrial areas.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Lawson?
Thank you. Um, in a situation like this, you, you, you wanna try to support the business community, you also wanna try to support the residents that have concerns, uh, but I think, you know, when it's quasi judicial, we also have to go by our code, um, whi- which says that the, uh, the setback shall be one hundred feet. I mean, it's, you know, it's nice to look at and say, oh, it's eighty-nine feet, that's really close to a hundred, but that, that just isn't the way it works, and it says it shall be one hundred feet. Um, and theoretically, if we were to approve of something that's eighty-nine feet because it's close, theoretically, somebody somewhere along the line, I mean, I don't know how many requests we're gonna get for overnight dog boarding, but, but the concept is still the same for any type of, uh, a, a situation where it says shall be X number of feet. Theoretically, somebody, uh, somewhere down the line could say, oh, well, mine's only eighty-five feet, is that okay? And somebody else could say, mine's only seventy-nine feet, is that okay? Um, I, I think our hands are pretty much tied, I mean, it says it shall be one hundred feet, and, uh, it, that doesn't appear to have any gray area there, uh, from, from my standpoint.
With that, devil is in emotion.
Ms. to deny the application? Second.
Local?
Commissioner Banter?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarpani?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
There are she?
Yes. That concludes, uh, our agenda for this evening, uh, if you have any comments?
Um, no, she said, I guess our canine can doggy die now, is that correct?
I'm not sure, we'll have to check the code on it. Maybe he can, but I don't know about the officer.
No further comment.
Nothing to report?
To the manager?
No, sir.
Metal clerk? Ms. Tarpani?
I don't, I don't have any comments, thank you.
Ms. Lawson?
I think I'm gonna run in the, uh, October, what is it, October nineteenth, and I, I'd like the rest of the board to run with me, when we have the zombie run.
The zombie run?
No, it's called, didn't we approve it tonight?
Zombie run, yes.
Yeah, so I, I'd like to encourage the rest of the board to run with me.
I'll run if, if the mayor and Commissioner Banter run.
Well, I'm gonna be out of town, so that's, I'm accused on this side, literally.
Well, in that case, the mayor and the city manager.
Do y'all have any comments? I don't wanna just-
No, just I, the fact that I, I honestly thought maybe try my first, what's it, a five K, what do y'all call this stuff? Three point one miles or something? I don't need to walk in it, you're talking about my house, hopefully it's not gonna be hot, but I'm gonna be out of town, so I encourage people to, to out there, it looks like it's gonna be fun, so, and I wish Commissioner Larson success in his run, in the zombie run.
Well, I'll just say that from my comments, I appreciate the offer of that that has been extended by Commissioner Lawson, and I will publicly state now that I will consider it. Not very seriously, but I will consider it. With that, we adjourn at nine, uh, twelve.